The program has been the most rewarding educational journey that I have ever taken.
One of the most amazing things was meeting the Teachers of the Year from all the other states.
We want others to know what we do and to understand what we do. We have to make teachers and teaching visible, to share a voice and a vision of what teaching and learning can be for all different types of learners.
Applying to be the Arkansas Teacher of the Year could be some of the best professional development I've ever done.
This is a life-changing experience, and you will be strengthened in your passion and your commitment to education.
Being named Arkansas Teacher of the Year has given me an opportunity to expand teacher voice across the state. I've been able to provide that voice for teachers, and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. For more information about the Teacher of the Year program and submitting nominations, please visit arkansased.com. Thank you.
How's that? Working now? All right. Okay, welcome everyone. If you could silence your cell phones. I've silenced mine. We will start out with the Chair's report. Chair doesn't have a report, so I'll go around, starting with you, Mr. Black, for reports of Commissioners.
I have nothing to...
I mean, all right. Ms. Mahoney?
No report.
Mr. Davis?
I make up something. I make up something. We had a wonderful teacher celebration in the Allen School District, and we're currently doing a CT Academy on the campus.
I don't have any reports.
At some point throughout the day, I ran into Joe Rollins, who runs the School of Innovation in Springdale, and Joe and I have had a number of conversations about what he's doing there. And it got me to thinking that around the idea of ensuring that we keep our schools of innovation on the radar and we're capitalizing on the outstanding work that they're doing, and how do we begin to fold those in? And so, I just want to show a quick video this morning that talks a little bit about what's happening at that School of Innovation in Springdale, because I think it's pretty impressive and forward-thinking about how we work with our educational institutions in Arkansas. So if we can show that video, I greatly appreciate it.
Welcome to the future of education. Welcome to the Springdale School of Innovation.
The Springdale School of Innovation was created for students just like you, students who need a little bit different look at their education, students who might really enjoy technology, students who want to pursue their college hours, students who want to go get a job right after high school, students who want to have that relationship with their teachers. Our goal is real simple. We're here to provide a brand-new learning experience for you that's going to get you ready to be college and career-ready when you graduate.
At the School of Innovation, we want to send students out with employable skills. In order to accomplish this, we have set up Real World Wednesday Experiences for all students. On Wednesdays, we bring in business leaders and different career people to educate the students on what skills would be needed to obtain careers in their fields. This opens up the students to other career fields they might not otherwise be considering. From this, we are able to individualize their associate's degree opportunities.
So we have people come and speak to us about what their job is like and how their normal day goes, and we get to learn about it, and it's really helpful because it really helps decide what we want to do.
Well, I don't really know what I want to be when I grow up, so it's helping me see what all is out there, because there's a lot of them that I've never even heard of, and it shows me what I'm capable of doing.
So at School of Innovation, we've met with business, industry, and college leaders, and they've told us what kind of skills they want our graduates to have. And so, we've really been working to build those skills as essential habits of mind right into the School of Innovation curriculum.
The School of Innovation has taught me to prioritize my assignments on what I need to get done first and what I need to work on as in long-term assignments.
When it gets hard, you can just keep working at it, because at the end, you'll always be worth it.
Working in groups is a lot easier because you can work on a document together.
On Google Docs, everyone is literally on the same page.
I chose to come to the School of Innovation because I would graduate with a two-year associate's degree in college.
What I like best about the School of Innovation is that you don't have to be stuck in a classroom all the time. You can be in the student reunion and have time for yourself to get stuff done.
At the School of Innovation, we give students an opportunity to focus their education on their career goals. Whether you want to become a lawyer, nurse, or electrician, the School of Innovation is for you. With our flexible schedule, the ability to learn at your own pace, and a college-like experience, not to mention having the opportunity to obtain an associate's or technical degree upon your high school graduation. So what are you waiting for? The School of Innovation is right for you.
Self-direction.
Collaboration.
Communication.
Perseverance.
Innovation.
So if you're ready for this kind of learning experience, if you're ready for these kind of relationships with teachers and these kind of opportunities, we want you to invest in yourself and in your future. We want you to come be a part of the School of Innovation. Applications are available at soi.sdale.org.
Thanks for that. I really am so proud of the programs, and when you visit the School of Innovation, which takes place in the Jones Community Center, you see kids in groups kind of gathered around tables with their laptops, working on projects. Teachers help to guide them along the way. Students are interacting with adults in a very personal manner about projects. The business community has really gotten on board, as you saw, with the Wednesdays and really stepped up the careers that are in Northwest Arkansas. So really pleased with the direction of the program, and I'm hopeful that this is something that we can continue to see and grow throughout our state.
Great. Good report. Ms. Savers, nothing? Ms. Suck?
Yes, I had the opportunity to attend the Northwest Arkansas Co-op Meeting, and our Commissioner was one of the speakers, and there were several others. And their goal that day was education, youth, and the economy. And they were bringing running line with this. They were bringing in business people from all over the state and educators to try to get a lot of... These are the kind of skills that are available. You know, make sure the kids know it, let them come in. The factories of today are not really factories like we think of them. And one example that was given is diesel mechanics, and that it's not like we think of as a shade tree mechanic from a long time ago. It's a lot of skills. There's a six-month training period and all that. And the man said there are over 8,000 jobs available in Arkansas right now for diesel mechanics, and they're having to bring people in from other states to do that job. And I think, you know, we've appropriated money and passed bond 82, Amendment 82, to give incentives, and here's 10,000 jobs or 8,000 jobs, and, you know, no one to fill them, and no one's asking for tax incentives to get it done. So I think this and the conversion charters that we have going, and hopefully other pockets around the state, there's a big opportunity here in central Arkansas to think of a conversion charter or School of Innovation to work with in light of what Mr. Davis was saying yesterday. Here are some things, business community, that you can do to help us in the schools, and then get the counselors, the educators, the principals, and the parents aware so that these children can have those stackable skills, build a good foundation. You don't have to decide what you want to be when you're 16, but you can start building a foundation so that when you, once you do know and find out what your aptitude and your interest is, that you'll have a foundation to build on.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Newt? Ms. Black?
Just to piggyback off Mr. Davis's presentation, as many of you all know and I've shared in previous occasions, I've been working on this career education study for NASBE, and had the opportunity to visit with actually the Springdale School of Innovation, to observe the students as well, as well as their other career education programs. And I, just to give you all that visual context, these students are working on actually building houses that people are using right there in Northwest Arkansas. They are doing the hands-on electronic work and coming out of school with certifications, already with job offerings that are going to lend themselves onto higher education. And I just found it was so impressive, and we hear about this all the time, but to actually go see it in person and walk in one of those houses, and they've even adjusted the campuses at Springdale High School and Harbor High School to be able to accommodate this and to bring it to its fullest potential. And I just think that it's so exciting to see Arkansas lead the way, really nationwide, I think, in some of this work, and it really makes me proud of our state. And my hope that with our work ahead, that we can have some conversations with the Department of Career Education, and that we really can look at this combined approach of college and career readiness, and what that looks like in complementing each other in our shared efforts to help the potential of all these children. So thank you, and thank you, Mr. Davis, for showing that wonderful video. That really is another great visual for our folks to be able to see that that aren't in Northwest Arkansas. Thank you.
Ms. Crosswell?
Since this is my last meeting with you all for this year, I wanted to say a thank you to the Board members. As I mentioned yesterday, I really felt like you all made me feel super welcome. As someone who's vocal, as someone who values teacher voice and teacher leadership at every turn, I felt like you validated that and pushed my thinking and made me develop into a better leader and a better man. With that in mind, the 2015 Teacher of the Year, Weida Newton, if you'll stand briefly. I think it's worth of applause. She will be on the Board next month. She will be a fantastic representative of the teaching profession, super smart, super experienced, and I can't wait to see what her voice will be on this Board. With that in mind, the report that I'll have at the end of today's session, Report Number Eight, there's a video, another video with the profiles and teacher leadership that we have ready for you. I think it would be appropriate to show it at that time because it flows into the report on professional development for the state. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. So Commissioner Key?
Mr. Chairman, I want to give a report on the Status of Computer Science Initiative. Anthony Owen has been named as the Coordinator for that project. He is an internal hire, but has a background in math, a background in computer science. He's also an attorney, and so he will come to this with a lot of energy and a lot of good ideas, and we're excited about the direction he's going. We have seen the first round of grant applications from the school districts who are seeking to get ready to roll out the Computer Science Initiative and make those classes available. We also have the class available, An Essentials for Computer Coding. It's online with Virtual Arkansas, and code.org is working with us. They have provided an opportunity for some of our teachers in Arkansas to go to a PD session, a week-long, it's kind of like a boot camp for code.org, and I think 16 Arkansas teachers, if I believe at the last count, have taken advantage, are taking advantage of that opportunity. So I hope to have Anthony to come in. He will officially begin his duties on July 1st, and look to have him to come in at a later Board meeting to give a more complete update. We have also really excited about the upgrade to AppScan. We are getting ready to roll that out. In the first year, 125 districts will be coming on board with the upgraded AppScan, which will be at minimum 100 kilobits per second per user, which is a far cry greater than what the old AppScan system offers. And it is going to be scalable, so we look to, as we have more opportunity to scale that speed up, then we'll look to do that. The great thing is that it's happening within the context of our current budget. We're going to get more for the same amount of money that we're already spending in the department. It will be a two-year rollout because of some of the contractual obligations in some of our districts. They won't be able to come online until the second year, but I'd say that in the two-year period of time, we're going to see great opportunities because of the upgraded speed, upgraded capacity of our broadband in our school districts. And I want to give credit to Susan Harriman and to the work that she did, Brittany Kincaid and others in their group that worked hard on this back when we, when it didn't look like we were going to get anywhere, because I was working with them during the time that I was still in the Senate, and it's been a long process. It doesn't look like what we thought it might look like when we started, but what it's going to be is a great tool for our districts to use in upgrading the ability to provide education quality. Real excited about that. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Key. So now, I'm very excited to move to Report Three, which is the recognition of Mrs. Dorothy Gillum. And so, Commissioner Key, are you and Ms. Pfeffer going to go to the podium? We have distinguished guests with us this morning, former Commissioners and others. So Commissioner Key and Ms. Pfeffer, you are recognized.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, very excited today for this occasion that we can celebrate the dedicated service of one of our employees. Mrs. Dorothy Gillum is celebrating 50 years as an employee of the Arkansas Department of Education. Mrs. Dorothy began her career at the department on June 1st, 1965, as a clerk in school food service, now known as child nutrition. She later held administrative positions in the Federal Programs Unit and in the Director and Commissioner's Offices. She served as Executive Secretary to former Director Arch Ford, and over the years, she has helped shepherd 18 Directors and Commissioners through the department. We have attempted to reach out to these Commissioners, and there are a few that are here that offer words of encouragement. Let me read through the list so that you will see, you'll get a flavor of the history that Miss Dorothy has been a part of in education in Arkansas. Of course, Arch Ford, Earl Willis, Don Roberts, Daniel Pilkington, Tommy Venters, who was unable to attend but sent his best to Miss Dorothy, Ruth Steele, Diane Sadoriak, Burton Elliott, John Fincher, Gene Willhoyt, William Fisher, Ray Simon, Tom Courtway, Ken James, Diana Julian, Tom Kimbrel, Tony Wood, and now Johnny Key. And I have a letter. We'll start with Ray Simon, and he sent a letter for me to read congratulating Dorothy. "For Dorothy, in celebration of her 50 years of service to the Arkansas Department of Education. For most of my adult life, I labored under the impression that I could write really well. That all changed in 1997 when I met Dorothy Gillum. Shortly after arriving at the department, bringing with me a history of composing my own correspondence and writing my own speeches, I presented my first such attempt here to Dorothy for mailing. She quickly scanned the document, shook her head, and smiled politely, then said she would take care of it. Taking care of it took the form of its being returned to my desk, punctuated throughout in red ink, words and sentences lined through with new words and phrases taking their place. The overall content was reduced by a third. I learned that day the real power of a real writer. From that moment forward, I considered anything that I wrote as merely a rough draft of a good thought that I knew Dorothy would make great. Those skills did not stop with the written word. Her counsel on many things, both to me and others on our ADE team, while not always recognized and appreciated, were central to whatever success we may have achieved during our service. She was the department's conscience, public relations specialist, and, given a phone in 24 hours, could locate anyone on the planet. I'm absolutely convinced, in secret documents to be released in a few decades, that Dorothy Gillum was the one who finally found Osama bin Laden. It breaks my heart that I cannot be present in person for this grand, golden celebration of Dorothy's service. I do look forward, however, to seeing this message again soon, returned with red lines, new words, and shortened by a third. I love you, Dorothy. Ray Simon."
And now, I would invite Dr. Courtway to come up, and he'll be followed by Dr. Ken James, Dr. Diana Julian, and Tony Wood. Dr. Kimbrel and Mr. Wood send their regrets, but they couldn't make it here today.
Mr. Chairman, members of the State Board, Director Key, distinguished guests, Dorothy. I really don't know why I'm here. I was interim director. I was supposed to be hired for two months, ended up being six. And my definition of a friend from time to time changes, but there's part of it that always remains the same, and that's someone who is good to you, respects you, treats you with dignity when they have absolutely nothing to gain. I walked in the doors as interim director, and I was not qualified for the job. The entire state knew I was not qualified. That's two huge strikes against you when you take that job. And this woman treated me with respect, treated me with dignity. I came to admire her on so many levels. She's smart. She comforted me. She held my hand when I cried, and I did occasionally, if you recall that time. And she also had an incredible sense of humor, because during that session, Mr. Chairman, frequently on Friday afternoon, a member of the staff of the Bureau would come out the back door of the Capitol about 3:00 o'clock every Friday with a list of things that I had to do over the weekend before the legislature reconvened on Monday. And so, Dorothy was very perceptive. She would look out the window, and then she would see this person come out the back of the Capitol, and it was always the same person. I'm not going to call his or her name. But what she would do is she'd come to me and say, "Mr. Courtway, I just saw the back door of the Capitol open, and I see Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so coming down the sidewalk, and I don't know what's on the list, but I do know that they're coming down to take another bite out of your tail." And she was right. So Dorothy, you did a lot for me, and God bless you and your family. Thank you. And so, as you get called in the window, you can support your favorite university.
Thank you, President Courtway. I appreciate you being here. Now, Dr. James?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Key, members of the Board, it's a deep pleasure to be here, and I know for some of you, it's your last meeting, and congratulations for your service, and thank you for your service. It was a pleasure to work with Chairman Ledbetter, Ms. Mahoney. Enjoyed the time very much. Really proud to be here to celebrate Dorothy's 50 years, and I really don't know where to start, although I spent five years and two months with Miss Dorothy, and I never will forget, like Mr. Courtway mentioned, when I walked in the door, she said, "Young man, you're number 13." Or 14, whichever one it was. And I quickly realized my role and what I was there for, and I said, "Yes, ma'am." Dorothy has meant so much to the department, and I'm going to share just a few things with you, but I can't tell you how many people across the country, when they would call the Department of Education, and they would talk to Dorothy, would tell me the next time they saw me in whatever meeting it was around the country, what she meant and how eloquent she was, and what an ambassador for the department that she was. And every one of them said to me, "I wish and I hope I have the opportunity to meet Miss Dorothy one of these days," and several did. But the bottom line was she impressed so many people over the phone and from a distance. And for those of us that worked with her on a day-to-day basis, she continued to impress us each and every day. And Dorothy, there's no doubt that you possess what President Abraham Lincoln referenced as the Mystic Chords of Memory. She has a phenomenal memory. And Soon to be released will be her first book. And she doesn't know I'm going to say this, and this is a little bit of joke and quest. I don't know if she's releasing a book or not, but in talking to her publicist, her book will be coming out before too much longer. And I think probably the title is going to be something around the line of Managing, Surviving, and Navigating: 18 Commissioners of Education by Miss Dorothy Gillum. And I think that in those chapters that she writes, there will be lots of phenomenal stories. She used to share with me the beginnings with Arch Ford, and this is a lady that started as the department when we still had segregated bathrooms. And we talked about some of those things over time, when we didn't talk about the legislature and the things we had to do and the different things that were permeating the day-to-day activities. And it was ever so powerful to me that she was willing to, number one, share those moments and those experiences, but it also brought home what she has experienced throughout her career in the state. She brings so much to the table, and when and if she decides to retire, she will be sorely missed, and she is someone that I will never forget. And I think every one of the Commissioners that have had the pleasure to work with her would echo the same things. The other thing that she would say to me, and several of you know that my first name really is Truman, although I go by Kenneth, and I don't know whether she really didn't like the name Truman or whatever, but when she would get, not really upset with me, but when she would want to get my attention, she would turn to me and she would say, "Now, Thurman." Correct, Dorothy? And she would wave that finger. She says, "Now, Thurman, let's talk about that. I know you're upset right now. Let's calm down. Let's talk about that, Thurman." And so, Dorothy, from the bottom of my heart, and from Sandra, congratulations. It was a pleasure and honor to work with you. Sincerely, Thurman.
Thank you, Dr. James. And, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Diana Julian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I do see some familiar faces. It's good to be here, and certainly a delight to be here for Miss Dorothy. Now, I, like Mr. Courtway, did not actually come in as a Commissioner. I was interim Commissioner, if you remember, I think about the same number of months. But I also spent over eight years, I think, around eight years, as deputy, and those were two different time periods. So I was around Miss Dorothy a lot, probably as much or more than any of the Commissioners up here. I could tell you a lot. I won't, I'll just tell you a few things about her. One of the things that Debbie asked me to do was say a few words about what it was like to work with Miss Dorothy. Well, my first thought was, it was like working with radar and my mother. She was very, very skilled and very diplomatic and knew what to do, when and how and how much of. Sometimes she would say to me, "Now, have you thought of..." And I knew that was what I needed to be doing. She is a very skilled person and a very intelligent person. I call her a survivor. I mean, she survived 50 years at the department. It's not, y'all up there in that office where she's been, the easiest of places to be. It can be very contentious. It can be very... It's just tough. You've got to have a lot of skills. You've got to have a lot of skills to manipulate that situation there. So I, first of all, want to say how much I respect her intelligence, and I would call her a perfectionist, but you can't really be a survivor and be a perfectionist. She's a perfectionist that is able to manipulate the situation. I would like to mention that there's three things that I remember in working with her distinctly. The first one was coffee. Coffee did a lot of things in that office. Right? Can't you just see Ms. Dorothy with that coffee pot walking around? She... It calmed a lot of nerves, gave you time to think, gave you time to cool off, and collect your thoughts so that you could move ahead, and also gave her time to say, "Dr. J, have you thought of..." The second thing that I remember, oh, by the way, under the coffee, we drank a lot of coffee one day. Do you remember the day that we changed governors twice? Yeah? Here she came with the coffee pot. We watched television to see who her boss was. The second thing was, someone's already mentioned, she could make a phone call and get any kind of information you wanted, probably still can. If you needed something, if you needed a contact, if you needed something, if she didn't know them personally, and she probably knew them personally, but if she didn't know them personally, she knew who to call to get to them. Her communication chain was amazing, and very well respected in that chain. And the third thing that I remember about Ms. Dorothy is that she was a prayer. If she told you she would pray for you, she believed in prayer. If she told you that she would pray for you, she did. And I really remember that because I also believe in that. And she really, really had a strong Christian prayer life, and I always admired that. I will tell you this, Dorothy, there is life after ADE. There is. I left the ADE twice, and there was life both times. So there is life out there, and if you ever do decide to, you're going to still contribute in a big, big way, you may not ever want to. I'm one of those that don't think I'll ever retire, so, even though I left the ADE. I like being out there and in the middle of things. So I will tell you, though, that you will, that the work that you've done at the department, the mentoring that you've done, the help that you've given, will live on and on and on and on. I cannot think of the ADE without thinking of Ms. Dorothy. I want to congratulate you on the 50 years, and thank you for what you did for me. And I have just a little bitty token of my appreciation.
Thank you, Dr.
Ms. Dorothy, could I ask you to come join me here at the podium? I learned early on, I'll just ask. Dorothy, on behalf of the department, we want to present you with a pen to commemorate your 50 years of employment. And, yeah, why don't you open that so we can pin you, and I'm just going to do that, so I don't stick you.
I just stuck so many times that... Oh, add that to my collection.
This pen is a diamond, has a diamond insert to commemorate this special day and this special recognition.
One of those things we should practice, maybe. Yes.
John, where are you? Go to a church.
It's fitting, because I think Ms. Dorothy is certainly, should be considered a diamond to all of us. And when the history of Arkansas is updated, you know, we may not see her name, but certainly her spirit is what Arkansas history is made up of. Pioneers and folks who stick with it. And she told me a story recently about a day she was ready to walk out. And thankfully, someone who unbeknownst to us, to him at the time, was going to be a blessing to all of us, because he encouraged her to stay and stick it out, and she did. I have some other things to, while you're here with me, Ms. Dorothy, to read.
He's telling y'all this, because the first day he walked in the office, he says, "Young man, I've been here longer than you've been in the world, so let's..."
And that is a fact. She's got me beat by about three and a half years. I have a Senate citation that I want to read, and sent over by Senator Elliott, Senator English. Whereas Ms. Dorothy C. Gillum, an administrative analyst for the Arkansas Department of Education, is thought to be the only person who has worked for the agency for 50 consecutive years, and is known for her exemplary professional standards and attention to detail. And whereas she has worked with 18 directors and commissioners, including service as executive secretary for former director Archford, and her thorough knowledge of the department has earned her the informal title of ADE historian. And whereas Ms. Gillum willingly and graciously accepted additional responsibilities, such as serving on inter-agency committees and conducting training sessions, and in 2008 was the first recipient of the Lifetime Achievement Award of the Interdepartmental Relations Committee. And whereas Senator Joyce Elliott joins Senator Jane English, the Chair of the Senate Education Committee and the entire Arkansas Senate, in expressing their admiration for Ms. Dorothy Gillum and their respect for her life's work, now therefore pursuant to the motion of Senators Joyce Elliott and Jane English, the Arkansas Senate directs that this citation be presented on this 10th day of June 2015. That's the first one. And I have a House citation. Sam, you remember all these work. For Dorothy Gillum, whereas Dorothy Gillum, who is an administrative analyst for the Arkansas Department of Education, Commissioner, is celebrating 50 years of dedicated service, a milestone that very few people ever achieve. And Ms. Gillum, who began her career at the Arkansas Department of Education in 1965, has witnessed many changes in the department, and has held numerous positions, including serving as a clerk in school food service, holding administrative positions in the federal programs unit, working in the director and commissioner offices, and serving as executive secretary to a former director. And whereas Ms. Gillum, who earned the title of Arkansas Department of Education historian based on her knowledge of the department, was a charter member of the Interdepartmental Relations Committee, where she served many years as vice chairman and chairperson, and in 2008 was selected as the first recipient of the committee's Lifetime Achievement Award. Whereas the House of Representatives of the 90th General Assembly of the State of Arkansas takes great pride in recognizing Dorothy Gillum for 50 years of service to the state of Arkansas and wishes her well, now therefore pursuant to the motion of Representatives Charles Armstrong and Bruce Kozart, Arkansas House Representative directs that this citation be presented on this day in June 2015. a letter from the Board of Education. Dear Ms. Dorothy, thank you for 50 years of dedication and service to the agency and to the public. Your willingness to serve others and provide support to those in need is acknowledged and appreciated. Your kindness to those seeking information and knowledge is the best customer service. Thank you for a job well done, signed by all the members of the board. from the Governor, dear Dorothy, I want to extend my personal recognition of your outstanding contribution to the state of Arkansas and to its citizens upon your 50th anniversary with the Arkansas Department of Education. Your commitment to the state of Arkansas and to the Arkansas Department of Education for more than five decades, working under 18 directors and commissioners, is the very definition of outstanding public service and contribution. In today's world, someone with your loyalty and expertise is rare, and I commend you for your achievements. From your role as the liaison for the State Board of Education, to your work as the Department of Education's historian, you have provided consistency and continuity through many years of change. I commend you for your charter membership in the Interdepartmental Relations Committee and for your 2008 Lifetime Achievement Award for 43 years of service in state government. You are a loyal and dedicated public servant and a role model to many. Again, thank you for your service to our state and for your lifelong calling to help the people of Arkansas. The Department of Education has benefited from your proficiency and dedication to excellence these past 50 years. Now for some introductions. Ms. Dorothy is married to John Gillum, who himself is a 46-year, 44-year employee of the department. And her children, they have two children, Diane and Thomas, and they've joined us here today for this occasion. Ladies and gentlemen, folks here in the audience, it just gives me great pleasure to be a part of this, and let's congratulate Ms.
I feel so blessed to be here, to be able to live 50 years, and to be thinking that some of the young people over here say nothing about being able to work, especially in the same place for 50 years. But sometimes when my children are at the house, they're chomping on that barbecue chicken and wanting to pull them off their... And I tell them some of the stories about my experience with the Department of Education. Of course, I tell them the good stories, but since they're my kids, and I think they need to learn that, I sometimes share some of the not-so-good stories. And sometimes they'll say, especially Diane, they'll say, "Mama, how did you pull up with all that stuff?" I say, "You know, Diane, many, many, many years ago, I formed this habit of eating. And in order to feed my habit, I had to work." And then sure enough, the two of you came along and formed the same darn habit, and I really had to work. But I feel blessed, as I say, I'm so appreciative of you coming here this morning, and it's just so great to see all of my friends that I was afraid I wouldn't remember, but sure enough, I remember. I sent one or two of them in here who gave me credit for helping them with their work when they first came to the Department of Education. Because some of them, I don't even remember what I did, whatever it was, I'm glad I did. But thanks again to everybody. For 20 of my 50 years, I was the state boy golfer. I was the Debbie Kaufman, combined with the Nobles system, the Doug Bradbury, that whole thing. And guess what? I traveled all around the state with the state boy members for their meetings, and I had to take the minutes of the meeting, and you know how I took them, don't you? With a pen, and a set of papers, and rushed to my office real fast before I forgot some of that stuff and transcribed it in the typewriter. And now I don't even know how to spell Nobles, so... But I don't have to do that. So thanks again to everybody for all you've done for my family, and I'm so appreciative. And people ask me all the time, "Well, when are you going to retire?" I say, "With Johnny T."
And my answer to that is not anytime soon, if I have anything to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dorothy, and on behalf of the entire board, it's an honor for us to be a part of such a special day. And just for myself, every time that I ever saw you or called up and talked to you, you always brightened my day. You always brightened my day and made me feel better, without fail. So thank you so much for everything you've done. All right? So we will now move to item, Report Three, which is the recognition of Joyce Vaughn. And Ms. Newton, are you going to take this?
I'm going to start from here, Mr. Chairman. And it's my pleasure to be a part of this recognition, certainly. Joyce, I first met Joyce, and I called her Mrs. Vaughn, and she said, "My name is Joyce." And she said, "My friends call me Joyce." So Joyce, I'm glad to be able to call you friend. And you have increased my ability to be able to do my job. So I stand here, I sit here, stand later, on behalf of those folks in southeast Arkansas, and particularly the Lakeside School District and Lake Village, to be a part of the Arkansas Department of Education's honor and recognition of your work and your service. Joyce Vaughn has been an educator in Arkansas for 69 years. She has been a classroom teacher, principal, federal coordinator, migrant cooperative director, assistant superintendent and superintendent. So today, we honor Ms. Joyce. Dr. Billy Adams, Assistant Superintendent, will start with the presentation.
All right, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, State Board, Commissioner. We really appreciate you taking this opportunity to recognize our superintendent for 69 years of dedicated service to public education. Ms. Vaughn's been around a long time, and one of the things that we decided to do is, and according to Toys, I won't say about March, Ms. Vaughn was at the meeting, and then Toys talked with her, and said, "Ms. Vaughn walked up and said, 'I'm going to retire.'" Well, Toys said, "That's the 25th time, so are you sure you're going to retire?" And so she said, "Call me back later on, and we'll decide what we're going to do." So I called Toys in June, and I said, "She's thinking about retiring, let's plan something." So Toys said, "Okay, we'll do that. Are you sure?" I said, "We'll call you later on." So June 12, we planned it for June 12, and then Toys said, "Well, why don't you come up with a video to be able to recognize her?" And so that's what we've done. We asked the technology department, along with our E-students, we have them here, and it was a short notice, they put a video together, because Ms. Vaughn has done so many things in the last 69 years. I can't stand here and tell you that time span. So therefore, you'll be able to see some things that they've put together, they've done interviews of educators, community leaders, showing the impact that she has done in the Lakeside School District as well as the state. So we're going to let you see a video at this time, and we'll give the E-students. Now, that video is about two and a half hours, if you have that much time. So they trimmed a lot of it down, it's about 17 minutes, it won't take that much time, and so we want you to sit back and enjoy. To the State Board of Education, Commissioner Key, on behalf of the Lakeside Board of Education and the Lakeside School District, we're so delighted... and the Lakeside School District, we're so delighted that you've taken the time out of your busy schedule to recognize our superintendent, Joyce L. Vaughn, for sixty-nine years of dedicated service to public education in Arkansas. That is unheard of in the base educational arena. She remains with a strong, sharp mind, with a keen vision, and has a strong passion for student learning, teacher quality, parent and community involvement. Today, you will hear testimonies in the history from past and present students, teachers, administrators, and community leaders on the contribution that Ms. Vaughn has made in the field of education over the last sixty-nine years. I'd like for you to sit back, relax, and enjoy, and listen to the history of Joyce L. Vaughn.
Joyce L. Vaughn has provided an educational foundation for teachers, parents, students, and the community for sixty-nine years. She has been a classroom teacher, principal, federal coordinator, college instructor, migrant cooperative director, assistant superintendent and superintendent over the course of nearly seven decades. She has a strong passion for student learning, teacher quality, and community involvement.
When someone's been at a school district for as long as she's been here for that lengthy amount of time, there's nothing but good and productive things that can come from that.
She began her career as an elementary classroom teacher in a one-room schoolhouse in nineteen forty-six in Lehman School District, where she taught for one year, then taught in Moro, Arkansas for nine years. Ms. Vaughn and her family moved to Lake Village, Arkansas in nineteen fifty-six, where she was employed in the Lakeside School District as a fifth-grade teacher. In nineteen sixty-two, she became the first female principal in a predominantly African-American elementary school of six hundred disadvantaged students before integration. As principal of central elementary school, Ms. Vaughn recognized that her students were using used textbooks, laboratory equipment, and outdated materials. She became an advocate for student rights and fought for quality educational services for her students.
She taught me in the fifth grade, I think it was nineteen sixty-one school year, and loved every minute of it. I mean, she was that good a teacher that she enjoyed going to school.
In nineteen sixty-five, Ms. Vaughn became the federal programs coordinator for Lakeside School District due to the passage of the Elementary Secondary Education Act of nineteen sixty-five, or Title One. Through Title One, she provided disadvantaged students with new textbooks, laboratory equipment, and training for teachers.
No longer did we have to receive those books, those old books, that they would box up and send it over to us at the school across town.
Over the past fifty-nine years with the Lakeside School District, she has made tremendous impacts in the classroom and the community. In nineteen seventy, Ms. Vaughn was instrumental in establishing one of the first kindergarten programs in Arkansas for five-year-old children. This initiative took place before state law required districts to implement kindergarten program. Also under her direction, a partnership was established in nineteen seventy-six with the University of Arkansas to offer graduate and undergraduate courses. Many students, community patrons, instructional assistants, teachers, and individuals across southeast Arkansas took advantage of this opportunity and received bachelors and masters of education.
Years ago in the seventies, she brought graduate-level courses to Lake Village, Arkansas, and then she implemented undergraduate level for people who were paraplegics who didn't have a teaching certificate to brush. She brought the University of Arkansas at Tom Blot to Lake Village. So she's had a tremendous impact on education all across the state and has been a leader for many of us.
She also implemented a school-based health clinic in nineteen seventy-nine to help reduce teen pregnancy and provide training to students, parents, and others in the community. After the program's implementation, teen pregnancy was reduced by ninety-five percent over a three-year period. In nineteen eighty, she implemented a teen mom's daycare to keep girls in school. As a result, the dropout rate decreased from six percent to one percent. Ms. Vaughn also partnered with community stakeholders and established one of the first alternative learning environments in the state of Arkansas for at-risk children, which also had a positive impact on the dropout rate and improved learning for disadvantaged students.
ALE was not even state mandated at the time that Ms. Vaughn actually developed the ALE program here. I was actually the first ALE director here, at least started in nineteen seventy-nine and had a search warrant, and we would work with her and his children.
In nineteen eighty-nine, Hillary Clinton brought home instruction for preschool youngsters, or HIPPEE, to Arkansas. Ms. Vaughn was among the first school administrators in the state to embrace the HIPPEE program. She sent a team of teachers to Israel for training to implement the program for four-year-old children. Through this initiative, parents were also trained to prepare their children for school at an early age.
For example, she was a leader early on in bringing HIPPEE into the state of Arkansas and was an early adopter of the HIPPEE program, which is so successful in our area and has helped so many young children get ready for kindergarten.
In nineteen ninety, Ms. Joyce Vaughn identified the need for a community center for students and families in Lake Village. She partnered with city leaders and the Arkansas Department of Education to establish cities and schools, and school buildings were open to the community to provide services to families and children to improve teaching and learning and help reduce teen violence through school programs, mentoring programs, and parenting classes.
She was, as a matter of profession, your ability, your knowledge, and she had every trait. She was strong enough to do the hard things and compassionate enough, professional enough to do the job that she's done all these years.
Ms. Vaughn also noticed that many disadvantaged students suffer from vision, hearing, and dental hygiene problems. In nineteen ninety-two, she worked with the National Guard Armory, the City of Lake Village, and local and regional physicians to establish vision and hearing screenings and dental hygiene services in the schools to eliminate some of the barriers her students were facing in terms of learning.
She has proved that you can get things done from just being dedicated to kids, making sure they get what they need to go through this life and make a better person for everybody.
In nineteen ninety-three, Joyce L. Vaughn and the Lakeside Board of Education launched a campaign to replace old school buildings that were constructed in the nineteen twenties, forties, and fifties. These facilities did not provide Lakeside students with warm, safe, and dry environment. A five-point-nine millage was passed to build new elementary and middle school facilities. This project was completed in nineteen ninety-five and was dedicated to her, honoring the fifty years of service given to the improvement of student learning in Arkansas public education.
The school that we're in right now, I think it's because of Ms. Vaughn's commitment to the community and to everyone involved in this district to have a school that where everyone will be together, and so I believe that Ms. Vaughn was instrumental in making that happen.
Over the next ten years, Ms. Vaughn focused her attention on teacher quality, recruitment, and retention in order to improve student achievement. In two thousand and three, she partnered with Teach for America, or TFA, in order to combat the teacher shortage in the Lakeside School District. TFA teachers fill critical areas such as math, science, Spanish, art, music, some business and technology, and elementary classroom. The partnership is ongoing, and the relationship has improved the educational opportunities of our students in and outside of the classroom. She allowed the TFA teachers to establish the Lakeside Delta Horizons Program, which gave our students an opportunity to travel to New York, Washington, D.C., Costa Rica, Greece, France, Paris, Peru, Spain, Barcelona, and Madrid.
So I really think she has shown that kids in the Delta, and especially Chico County, can learn on par with anybody else in the world and have doors open to them and pursue their dreams.
Ms. Vaughn did not waste any time in implementing research-based programs and training to improve the quality of teaching and learning across the district to meet the needs of all students. Under her direction, benchmark scores have increased throughout the district.
Years ago, when resources were extremely tight in education, she is one of the superintendents who, if there was funds available anyplace in the state, she would find those funds.
In two thousand and five, Ms. Vaughn provided an emergency shelter at Lakeside High School for Hurricane Katrina and Rita victims. Over two hundred families were housed on campus. In two thousand and six, she partnered with University of Arkansas Medical Science, UAMS, and Chico County Health Clinic to establish an allergy clinic in school for children from birth to age eighteen. Ms. Vaughn realized that the Arkansas Delta has the highest asthma rating among children in the state. She felt that there was a need to support the well-being of children in order for them to learn. Since the opening of the clinic, over six hundred children have been treated for allergies.
The best thing I can say is that she's led by example. So by her being active and participating in all these different organizations, she's made us as members of the district.
On February thirteenth, two thousand and six, the Arkansas State Board of Education took over the Udora School District, making it the largest school district takeover in the state under Act Sixty due to fiscal distress. Under Ms. Vaughn's leadership, the Arkansas State Board annexed the Udora School District to the Lakeside School District. This district had a ninety-eight percent free and reduced lunch rate and one hundred percent African-American population. Ms. Vaughn met with parents, teachers, students, and community leaders to reorganize the district. A pre-K through third-grade school remained in Udora while grades four through twelve were transported seventeen miles to Lake Village during the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school.
I think Lakeside School District reflects who Ms. Vaughn is. I mean, we've got great facilities, great teachers, and it's financially sound in a time where so many school districts had struggled to make ends meet, and with her last nightmare of the year, but not Lakeside, it was because of Joyce's strong leadership.
In two thousand and nine, she provided monetary support to pay the salaries of principals and teachers to educate children at the Yeast Thumb Public School in Arlington, Montserrat County, Liberia. Based on the Lakeside School District Facilities Index, there was a need to improve the condition of the Lakeside High School complex. During the two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten school year, Ms. Vaughn used America Recovery and Reinvestment Act funds to renovate the entire complex. Six additional classrooms were added for special education, math, health, E-Slab, and CIV students. Six classrooms were also added to the middle school to relocate students in math, special education, career orientation, art, and music classes that were in Porter Building. In addition, a new alternative learning environment building was under construction. The complex was completed on August thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. On July fourteenth, two thousand and ten, the Lakeside Board of Education voted to name the new complex the Joyce L. Vaughn Alternative Learning Center. Based on Arkansas Education Report, Volume Seven, Issue Three, released September eighth, two thousand and ten by the Office for Education Policy, University of Arkansas, Udora Elementary School was the highest achieving overall elementary school in Arkansas based on performance on the benchmark scores in math for two thousand and ten, one hundred percent, and benchmark scores combined, math and literacy, ninety-nine percent, for two thousand and ten. Ms. Vaughn has installed wireless internet access to all buildings, purchased smartboards, document cameras, iPads, Elmos, and response interactive systems in every classroom. Every student has a regular or mini laptop for use for instruction. She has provided the latest technology for students and training for teachers in order to prepare students for PRC assessment and to compete in a global society. In November of two thousand and eleven, the Lakeside High School was identified by the Arkansas Department of Education as one of the needs improvement priority schools with the lowest performance over a three-year period. Ms. Vaughn didn't waste time in meeting with her leadership team to implement an aggressive plan of action, then including, not limited to the following resources, mandates, and strategies. She received assistance from ADE, Southeast Co-op, employed elbow-to-elbow educational consultants, implemented PLCs, increased AP classes, implemented TEC, higher strategies, employed literacy and math specialists. Teachers participated in LDC and MDC, vertical and horizontal alignment curriculum, double block for low-performance students in math and literacy, and provided other resources, initiatives, and strategies as necessary to improve student achievement. On November fifth, two thousand and fourteen, the Lakeside High School exited the priority status and become an achieving school in math, literacy, and graduation. Over the past sixty-nine years, Ms. Vaughn has been an exceptional educational leader in the state of Arkansas. She is the longest-working public school administrator in Arkansas. She continues to dedicate her life to providing a quality education for Arkansas students.
And I can stay up here all day, because I've got to admit, I won't, I won't. Twenty years ago, I started my private nonprofit, and I was fortunate, I was sharing with a couple of the board members to meet Joyce, because she helped me to get out of my own way.
Was that when I tried to convince them we were twins?
Yeah, yeah, that was it. It was Joyce and Toys, yeah, but that didn't fly. But anyway, I was telling Kim earlier that many of you can't believe that I'm like a bull in china, I cause it sometimes, but Joyce taught me Delta E's, and she taught me how to speak Delta E's, and she taught me how to get things done. And it always, it wasn't always the way I wanted to get it done. I wanted to be straightforward, saying forthright and go and say it, and it's, Joyce said, "Is what it is?" She said, "But that's not going to get it done." So it's demonstrated here. So it's demonstrated here that certainly you are a pioneer. And when people would talk about, you know, "When is Joyce Vaught going to retire?", then some new initiative would come up, and she would always present herself as being on the cutting edge of everything that was going on. You know, the school health clinic with Dr. Joyce and LGC, that, and you know what controversy that was. But you stayed the course in many initiatives and just didn't listen to the status quo. And for that, the community of Lake Village and the community, and the school community have benefited, and we thank you. I have a couple of recognitions here that I want to share. And the first one is from the State Board of Education, and it says, "Dear Mrs. Vaught, thank you for sixty-nine years of dedication and service to public education. Your willingness to serve others is acknowledged and appreciated. Your passion for information and knowledge is the best model for students and the community. Your legacy of learning and wanting more for students is evident in the lives of those you touch. Thank you for your job well done, respectfully, and assigned by all the members of the Board of Education." The next one is a Senate citation. Whereas Ms. Vaught has been an Arkansas educator for sixty-nine years as a classroom teacher, principal, federal coordinator, migrant coordinator, cooperative director, assistant superintendent and superintendent, and whereas for fifty-nine years, Mrs. Vaught was at the Lakeside School District, where she began one of the first kindergarten programs in Arkansas before it was required in the state law, and where she began a school-based health clinic that reduced teen pregnancy and dropout rates, and whereas she has led campaigns to replace the elementary and middle school buildings to make them warm and safe, and her work was instrumental in making graduate and undergraduate coursework available, and whereas Senator Eddie Cheatham joins Senator Jane English, the chairman of the State Education Committee and the entire Arkansas Senate, in expressing their sincere appreciation for Ms. Joyce Vaught for improving the educational opportunities of generations of children. Now, therefore pursuant to the motion of Senators Eddie Cheatham and Jane English, the Arkansas Senate directs that this citation be presented this tenth day of June, 2015.
That's the same, the same.
This document. Okay. Okay. She does, listen, she does me, she's the only person I'm allowed to do me like this way. And she, I mean, she cuts it short. Before I present this, I'd like you to know the resilience of Joyce Vaught.
What did Joyce's house burn?
I just tell, I got to tell a story. January eighth, her house was completely destroyed by a fire.
And everything I ever...
And everything she ever owned, everything, can you imagine? And guess what she did? She rebuilt. And I think that speaks to her overall life and resilience and her strength and dedication of whatever. So if you see her coming, get out of her way. Okay, this is, it was, it was. We could have moved into an apartment, but anyway, we'll talk about that later. Okay, and this honor comes from the Arkansas House of Representatives, and it is Representative Mark McElroy and Bruce Kozar. So thank you, Joyce, for all of it. I'm going to give this a building.
Yeah, do he, I don't know if he did.
All right.
Now, I know I'm supposed to say thank you to a lot of people.
You are.
Especially to you. I appreciate all that you've done.
I love you.
I love you too. Been a long time.
It's been a long time.
You sure not twins?
We're not twins, but we are twins in spirit.
They're neighbors alike.
Yeah, they are. See, she does this and gets everything, anything she wants out of you. When you leave, you think, "What did she just do?"
Thank you, Joyce, for this, and thank you for listening, and thank you for looking. And I want to thank the group here who did all of this. I didn't see how you pulled it together in that late a time, which is an excellent job on private. This is our E-Slab, E-S group here, and they have worked hard, and I do appreciate it. I could talk now, let me get started. I have lots of stories to tell, and I could talk now. Remember, sixty-nine years ago, none of you were even born. I was teaching school, think of that, before any of you were born. But the main things are still the same. The only reason they let me at eighteen in that classroom was because there weren't any teachers. Well, that's what we're facing today. There was no money. It was ninety dollars a month, but then they thought they were paying me a good salary. You know, you didn't have to have a degree. But, and the worst thing of all, with that big thing that's back there in the back now, consolidation, if we don't get a teacher, they're going to validate our school. Let's take her. And so we did. It was a split term. Do any of you remember a split term? So we taught June and July, then got the cotton in, got the crops in, it started back in September, October. Well, that was a two-room school. This, the thing says one, but it was really two, two teachers, two rooms, oh, probably forty kids, and they were fighting desperately to keep our school and not get consolidated. So they let me start teaching sixty-nine years ago. Now, it hasn't seemed that long, and the problems are still the same today as they were then. But it's been a great life, and I've enjoyed every minute. No, I haven't enjoyed every minute. No, you're saying that. If I had it to do over, I'd do it all over again. And I can tell you some really cute stories about practically happy people in this room, but don't think I ought to. But I would like to tell one, if I can get permission. Let me see, who's that? Don't tell it, tell it.
Frank.
This is one of your former State Department directors, but I knew him when he was just Frank, and over at Wilma. And we go back fifty years, I guess. But one time during that time, after Frank became Mr. Anthony, I should say, when Mr. Anthony got to the State Department of Education, I needed some information. And I called every department up there, and everybody told me they didn't know or sent me on to the next one. And I had reached the end of my patience, and I thought, "Well, what's the use of knowing Frank if I just can't call him and ask him what I want to know?" So I called his office, and I was determined I was going to find out. And the secretary says, "I'm sorry, but Mr. Anthony is out until Monday." And I thought, I said, "Well, is he coming back before closing?" I mean, he usually went in, but if he was out, he'd get back, he got there by the time he closed. And she said, "Yes." I said, "Well, you tell him, let me tell you, you tell him his girlfriend called, and he better call her." And this little voice comes back on the phone, and she said, "Yes, Ms. Vaught, I'll tell him." I said, "Do you know my name?" She said, "I graduated from Lakeside High School." That's the last time I called any man up to threaten me. But it so happened that Frank's always said girlfriend every time he meets me, so I was just repeating what he had said, but I haven't done it since then. Education has not changed that much, and yet the problems are still the same. If I had it to do over, I wouldn't hesitate. I have two grandchildren. One of them's a first-year teacher, one of them's just finished a master's and wants to write before she teaches. So she's taken a year off to write. It's the best life that you can live, and I've lived it. And I thank all of you, those of you who came, and those of you who have put this together, and those of you who had to listen to it all especially. Thank you.
Truly amazing.
Ms. Vaught, Ms. Vaught, up here on the board, up here, this way. Amazing video, and thank you so much for what you've done for the children of Arkansas. And you know, I truly think that you've probably done everything for Lake Village except develop a new, fast-growing soybean. So maybe you could work on that in your spare time, in your spare time, but thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to take a short break, about ten minutes, and we'll be back and start with our next report from Ford, Arkansas.
The Teacher of the Year program has been the most rewarding educational journey that I have ever taken.
One of the most amazing things was meeting the Teachers of the Year from all the other states.
We want others to know what we do and to understand what we do. We have to make teachers and teaching visible.
To share a voice and a vision of what teaching and learning can be for all different types of learners.
Applying for, to be the Arkansas Teacher of the Year could be some of the best professional development I've ever done.
This is a life-changing experience, and you will be strengthened in your passion and your commitment to education.
Being named Arkansas's Teacher of the Year has given me an opportunity to expand teacher voice across the state. I've been able to provide that voice for teachers, and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. For more information about the Teacher of the Year program and submitting nominations, please visit arkansasend.gov. Thank you.
The Teacher of the Year program has been the most rewarding educational journey that I have ever taken.
One of the most amazing things was meeting the Teachers of the Year from all the other states.
We want others to know what we do and to understand what we do. We have to make teachers and teaching visible.
To share a voice and a vision of what teaching and learning can be for all different types of learners.
Applying for, to be the Arkansas Teacher of the Year could be some of the best professional development I've ever done.
This is a life-changing experience, and you will be strengthened in your passion and your commitment to education.
Being named Arkansas's Teacher of the Year has given me an opportunity to expand teacher voice across the state. I've been able to provide that voice for teachers, and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. For more information about the Teacher of the Year program and submitting nominations, please visit arkansasend.gov. Thank you.
The Teacher of the Year program has been the most rewarding educational journey that I have ever taken.
One of the most amazing things was meeting the Teachers of the Year from all the other states.
We want others to know what we do and to understand what we do. We have to make teachers and teaching visible.
To share a voice and a vision of what teaching and learning can be for all different types of learners.
Applying for, to be the Arkansas Teacher of the Year could be some of the best professional development I've ever done.
This is a life-changing experience, and you will be strengthened in your passion and your commitment to education.
Being named Arkansas's Teacher of the Year has given me an opportunity to expand teacher voice across the state. I've been able to provide that voice for teachers, and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. For more information about the Teacher of the Year program and submitting nominations, please visit arkansasend.gov. Thank you.
The Teacher of the Year program has been the most rewarding educational journey that I have ever taken.
One of the most amazing things was meeting the Teachers of the Year from all the other states.
We want others to know what we do and to understand what we do. We have to make teachers and teaching visible.
To share a voice and a vision of what teaching and learning can be for all different types of learners.
Applying for, to be the Arkansas Teacher of the Year could be some of the best professional development I've ever done.
This is a life-changing experience, and you will be strengthened in your passion and your commitment to education.
Being named Arkansas's Teacher of the Year has given me an opportunity to expand teacher voice across the state. I've been able to provide that voice for teachers, and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. For more information about the Teacher of the Year program and submitting nominations, please visit arkansasend.gov. Thank you.
The Teacher of the Year program has been the most rewarding educational journey that I have ever taken.
One of the most amazing things was meeting the Teachers of the Year from all the other states.
We want others to know what we do and to understand what we do. We have to make teachers and teaching visible.
To share a voice and a vision of what teaching and learning can be for all different types of learners.
Applying for, to be the Arkansas Teacher of the Year could be some of the best professional development I've ever done.
This is a life-changing experience, and you will be strengthened in your passion and your commitment to education.
Being named Arkansas's Teacher of the Year has given me an opportunity to expand teacher voice across the state. I've been able to provide that voice for teachers, and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. For more information about the Teacher of the Year program and submitting nominations, please visit arkansasend.gov. Thank you.
The Teacher of the Year program has been the most rewarding educational journey that I have ever taken.
One of the most amazing things was meeting the Teachers of the Year from all the other states.
We want others to know what we do and to understand what we do. We have to make teachers and teaching visible. To share a voice and a vision of what teaching and learning can be for all different types of learners.
Applying for, uh, to be the Arkansas Teacher of the Year could be some of the best professional development I've ever done.
This is a life-changing experience and you will be strengthened in your passion and your commitment to education.
Being named Arkansas's Teacher of the Year has given me an opportunity to expand teacher voice across the state. I've been able to provide that voice for teachers and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. For more information about the Teacher of the Year program and submitting nominations, please visit arkansasend.gov. Thank you.
The Teacher of the Year program has been the most rewarding educational journey that I have ever taken.
One of the most amazing things was meeting the Teachers of the Year from all the other states.
We want others to know what we do and to understand what we do. We have to make teachers and teaching visible. To share a voice and a vision of what teaching and learning can be for all different types of learners.
Applying for, uh, to be the Arkansas Teacher of the Year could be some of the best professional development I've ever done.
This is a life-changing experience and you will be strengthened in your passion and your commitment to education.
Being named Arkansas's Teacher of the Year has given me an opportunity to expand teacher voice across the state. I've been able to provide that voice for teachers and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. For more information about the Teacher of the Year program and submitting nominations, please visit arkansasend.gov. Thank you.
With the, uh, next item on our agenda, which is, uh, report number five, which is an update from Ford. Um, and so we've got listed, uh, Ms. Smith and, uh, Ms. Scantleberry. Uh, so Jared, are you gonna make this report?
It's okay. I'm gonna, uh, take the stage as the elder. Kathy is here, uh, in support. Um, so first I just have to, to call out, it's, it's pretty amazing to get to follow not one but two living legends, uh, in this. And, um, I don't know if I should thank or apologize to the person who set the agenda because they may have something against me, having me come against that and kind of talk to, um, but it is inspiring, um, and, uh, it, you know, reinforces my commitment.
The Teacher of the Year program has been the most rewarding educational journey that I have ever taken.
One of the most amazing things was meeting the Teachers of the Year from all the other states.
We want others to know what we do and to understand what we do. We have to make teachers and teaching visible. To share a voice and a vision of what teaching and learning can be for all different types of learners.
Applying for, uh, to be the Arkansas Teacher of the Year could be some of the best professional development I've ever done.
This is a life-changing experience and you will be strengthened in your passion and your commitment to education.
Being named Arkansas's Teacher of the Year has given me an opportunity to expand teacher voice across the state. I've been able to provide that voice for teachers and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. For more information about the Teacher of the Year program and submitting nominations, please visit arkansasend.gov.
I always do, you know, I'm, I'll march right through this, but obviously just stop any time, uh, anything that's unclear sparks thought. There are a few pages in here, you know, these documents we designed to stand alone. I'm not gonna blabber them. You've seen them before. But it just kind of reminds us the organizational partnership that came together to do this and of course our mission, uh, vision, mission and goal. Um, we have, uh, drafted a full plan, uh, at this point and we're currently working to, uh, develop it into a document, uh, that can be shared with the, with the public. Um, and we're engaging a lot of stakeholders in that process right now. Um, it's our goal to release that plan as soon as possible. Uh, but we are working, uh, to share and to, uh, communicate, uh, these recommendations with different people that have different, uh, different stakes in the, in the matter. We are gonna work to schedule time, uh, with each of you individually, uh, so that you all can go through the full report, uh, as it is lengthy and detailed. Um, we're very proud of it, but it takes a lot to go through it and we found that that's best in one-on-one form. So, uh, that scheduling process has already started and you can expect that, uh, in the coming days and weeks to go through every bit of it with us. Now, um, as I shared with you all briefly last time, um, sitting on top of all of the recommendations.
One of the most amazing things was meeting the Teachers of the Year from all the other states.
We want others to know what we do and to understand what we do. We have to make teachers and teaching visible. To share a voice and a vision of what teaching and learning can be for all different types of learners.
Applying for, uh, to be the Arkansas Teacher of the Year could be some of the best professional development I've ever done.
This is a life-changing experience and you will be strengthened in your passion and your commitment to education.
Being named Arkansas's Teacher of the Year has given me an opportunity to expand teacher voice across the state. I've been able to provide that voice for teachers and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. For more information about the Teacher of the Year program and submitting nominations, please visit arkansasend.gov.
Thank you. We looked at ESEA turnaround principles, um, and it led us to the, to the principles and the, the themes on the right, uh, that underlie all these recommendations, specifically to make sure that we're doing things to develop strong leadership that raises expectations for all kids, that we develop a positive, healthy school culture for the children and for the leaders and the educators in it, uh, that we commit to figuring out how to ensure that parent and community engagement is central and an integral part of the plans, that we think holistically about the wraparound services that kids need to be successful as students and as human beings, uh, that we develop strong instructional program and collaborative, uh, support, that we empower our best teachers, uh, to provide high-quality instruction, that we embrace creative use of time in similar ways to the first presentation that we saw this morning from Springdale, um, and that we effectively use data to drive instructional decisions and other decisions, uh, that related to the welfare of kids and the wellbeing of the school. Now, tied to those themes, we developed approximately 30 recommendations. Um, a few of them we think are quick wins and are real opportunities, but many of them will take a long time to see through.
One of the most amazing things was meeting the Teachers of the Year from all the other states.
We want others to know what we do and to understand what we do. We have to make teachers and teaching visible. To share a voice and a vision of what teaching and learning can be for all different types of learners.
Applying for, uh, to be the Arkansas Teacher of the Year could be some of the best professional development I've ever done.
This is a life-changing experience and you will be strengthened in your passion and your commitment to education.
Being named Arkansas's Teacher of the Year has given me an opportunity to expand teacher voice across the state. I've been able to provide that voice for teachers and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. For more information about the Teacher of the Year program and submitting nominations, please.
Not before schools get in it, but once they are in distress, once interventions are underway, how do we ensure a clear, effective and efficient process, uh, that, that delivers results? Fourth, are recommendations tied to the engagement and support of the community, which we know is an absolutely essential part of any process that's gonna work, uh, across all the schools that need the support. And then finally, there are a set of recommendations that are specifically about the Department of Education and the capacity that they're going to need, uh, to fulfill their charge and their role in this. And so to get into more detail around each of these, um, I'm gonna walk through five, uh, five types of recommendations that are emerged and that cut across these categories. So the first is making sure that we have a clear, consistent and transparent process for all stakeholders, uh, for schools that are in academic distress, uh, whether this is, um, you know, clarifying the academic criteria, but also the other, uh, criteria that we wanna consider for improvement in schools that were, that are emerging. Two is ensuring that we establish recommendations that take a proactive approach before schools ever even get in academic distress. As you all remember, we have just over two dozen schools that have been in academic stress currently, but we have several dozen more that are fairly close. And so part of our recommendations tie to what we can do to make sure they never get, never get there, improvement starts and they're supported before they, they actually, they even meet the designation. Uh, third, we have a set of recommendations that are entirely around both attracting and developing talent for schools in academic distress and schools that are near distress. This includes ideas like a turnaround academy where we can train and recruit and develop people that are both excited and equipped to go into schools that are in distress, but also so that we can think purposely about how to develop the existing talent that is in some of these schools today. The fourth, uh, area is around compiling action. Uh, right now, uh, you know, whether it's the department, support, uh, folks or other parties, there's, uh, they're empowered to make recommendations, but there's not always the ability to make sure that they're binding and that they are carried through to results. And so some of our recommendations ensure that, that these recommendations turn into directives that come with the support to make sure that they do achieve outcomes for, for, uh, kids. And then finally, uh, providing dedicated support for the effort. Uh, and this again involves predominantly empowering and supporting and equipping, uh, the department, uh, with sufficient quantity and quality of the talent and skills that they need to help not just hold, you know, schools accountable for improvement, but also to play a side-by-side, shoulder-to-shoulder role in delivering. And so with that, I wanted to just, you know, introduce three specific recommendations, uh, that we think are three of the most important ones to build with, uh, just because they're both foundational and they're also things that we can start making progress on very quickly. So the first is establishing, uh, and clarifying a comprehensive evaluation, uh, process and an ongoing evaluation process once a school is in, in distress and has been designated that way. This includes not only clarifying the helpful existing tools we already have, such as the, the, you know, A through F system, but also saying, is this comprehensive enough? Are there other metrics or indicators that we need in addition to student outcomes to assess and to act purposely, uh, towards the health of a school? Things like teacher satisfaction, teacher development, et cetera. And, and not just defining those, uh, those metrics, but ensuring that there's a process to evaluate them rigorously and in a timely way. Two, we talked about building state and ADE capacity to turnaround, uh, schools. There's some excellent people that are in the department right now that are working on this, uh, and they have been engaged in this process. And what they have said is, one, there needs to be more folks, uh, that are, that have their skills that are involved in this. Um, and two, there are some critical skills that they wanna invest in ensuring that they add, uh, to their repertoire so that again, they're not just making recommendations, they're not just auditing, they're actually able to work alongside the schools and really help do the work to, to, to drive improvement. This also will include recommendations around talent strategy, uh, such as, uh, making salaries more competitive to, to attract the best talent and to retain the best talent. And then third, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we think there's a real opportunity based on what we've seen in some other areas to develop a turnaround academy in Arkansas, working in conjunction with higher ed, working with the department, so that we are able to attract the very best folks to work, um, in some of our schools that need talent the most. Um, and so that we're also able to develop a central resource to actually help provide effective PD for the great people that are already fighting in the schools today to help them be all that our students deserve. So alongside those three early recommendations, um, we're also, you know, working to push some ongoing enablers that we've talked below, and these are basic but very important things that just include how Ford, uh, will work hand-in-hand with critical stakeholders, uh, going forward, whether it's the commissioner, um, and the people in his department, whether it's the, uh, working group that we're developing, which I'll tell you more about in a minute. We're currently in the process of building out the routines, the agendas, so that we have an ongoing partnership that actually starts to execute on these priorities and the other recommendations, uh, in the, in the proposal. So that's a preview of, of some of the things that we, uh, are starting to work on immediately. And it gives you a flavor of the broader set of recommendations, the 30, um, in academic distress, and there will be dozens more in the other report. As I mentioned, we would start sharing every single one of them with you individually when we have the space to really walk through it all. We're very eager to get your support, uh, and your input and we're working with other folks as well to get theirs. Um, what we have done right now, you know, we've had approximately 30 people that have served on a steering committee, uh, since last year to help design this report. I'm excited to say that, um, there hasn't been one single person who has not, uh, uh, agreed to endorse this report. We have four folks that have had to lean back in the committee for a few, uh, few very different reasons and they're still reviewing it. But everyone that has thoroughly reviewed the report on this committee, uh, and has had the time and has cast a vote, has voted in support of the recommendations that we'll be working through with you all, which we're very excited, uh, and proud to share. Going forward, um, some of these steering committee members will be joining, uh, what we're calling, um, our implementation working group. This is, um, kind of our next phase of our diverse coalition that's going to figure out how we take these incredible recommendations and work as one stakeholder in our broader education landscape to figure out how we deliver results with them. Uh, this year and frankly over the next, you know, decade or more. Um, this group, uh, will drive implementation of the plan. They'll be champions for it, not just the recommendations, but the process that we helped develop with you all and others to execute. Uh, they're providing, uh, input and strategy for how we develop the public document for this and roll it out. Um, and finally, last but not least, they're going to be, uh, what we hope is a permanent group to help monitor progress towards implementation, to provide accountability for myself and for others that are helping, uh, deliver on this. Uh, we are excited to announce, he's not here today, but Dr. David Rangy has agreed to be the chair of this group. Um, and we can't really imagine a better, uh, a better leader in education to help us, uh, take the reins and to, and to see this through to success. And so he's agreed to, uh, to help us lead this, this effort going forward. And we're really excited to announce that. So, uh, you know, what's happening next? I already mentioned, uh, if you haven't received requests already, I know, um, folks on our end are working logistics to get, uh, as much time as you all will give us to review every single recommendation in the plan individually. Uh, we want your input on all of it, the content, uh, the rollout strategy and even early thoughts you have on implementation. Uh, we are working to finalize a public document and part of our engagement with you all as individuals and other stakeholders is to figure out the way to do that that will be, uh, uh, the most effective, uh, that will ensure that people understand it or engage in it or excited about it and, um, are inspired to, to do what they can to help because it will take, uh, years for us to see it all through. Um, and then last but not least, through the working group, uh, and some of these, uh, recommendations, including the three that I shared, we are starting to get into the nitty-gritty of, okay, what does it actually look like? Dates, meetings, people to really start to do this, to do the work and to start delivering. Uh, and that is where we are right now. I'll take a breath and, uh, if you all have any, any questions or thoughts, uh, certainly welcome.
I was wondering if you, uh, in your planning process, if you have, um, a forecast of when the first phase of implementation might take place, you know, we're, and, and not to rush the process, but it will it be? And not to rush the process, but will it be at the beginning of a school year, this school year, next one? And in terms of what the plans offer rollout, once everything's congealed into--
Yes. So we don't have a specific date yet for full-scale kickoff. Having--
Not necessarily full-scale, but a phase of implementation. I don't know if you would start with a smaller group or going in, or what will start, how you'll-- or do you have a plan for identifying what would be the priorities, districts or schools or that type thing? And it may not be at that point yet.
It's not quite yet, to be honest. However, the working group that I mentioned has already started meeting, and these are the types of things we're trying to get clarity around. I will say that right now, although we're building the team to do this, we're still, such as with you all, working to syndicate and get feedback on the actual content of the recommendations so that we can inform the rollout and the actual delivery of the plan. We're starting to ramp up work to figure out the nuts and bolts of when we actually start executing, but I'll say our goal is to do it as soon as we possibly can. I think there's a great chance we will be working on that by the start of the school year, but we haven't set the date yet. I will say even with Commissioner Key, with the recommendations we've shared here, we already have started to have conversations about what this might look like, which I think in weeks, not months, will lead us to some specific dates when we can actually report on progress on some of these initiatives rather than what they are.
But although there's a sense of urgency, on the one hand, there is another need to be deliberate in terms of what you do and how you do it. I know you know this. So that what you do is impactful, as impactful as it can be because of just the nature of the situation with the schools in academic distress or those potentially entering into academic distress.
That is one of the constant themes and tensions that we grapple with, because people do feel urgent. That's part of what's led them to work in this. But we also know, we do believe there will be some opportunities to make a difference in the short term. There are some recommendations that can have near-term benefits. We also know that we're having to sign up for a very long time to really achieve the full impact of all of this.
Thank you for this. You discussed the idea of creating the communications plan or sharing of the plan. Can you give me a little more context around that, if you have it, or we may not be there yet? And specifically, and I don't know the answer to this question, in regards to the online surveys that were filled out, did we capture contact information when we did that?
Yes, we did.
And so there may be the opportunity to then go back and share the plan through that communication channel?
Possibly, possibly. That's one thing that we want input on as we share the plan with you all and others. In our initial working group meeting last week, we actually had a list of about two dozen different organizations that we wanted to start a conversation with before the public rollout. And one of the things on the agenda to talk about is precisely who and how we needed to engage folks with this plan. And so I think that's one example of an idea that could--
Because we had close to 7,000, is that correct?
More, yes.
More than 7,000 individuals who took time to fill out the online survey that helped us create the plan.
Yes.
So we might give some thought to sharing it once we're ready to share it publicly to then reengage those folks in that manner.
I think that's an awesome idea.
Yes. On the slide, let's see, it's the one where it talks, it has the three beige-y colors and then over the description, immediate priorities. It seems to me that like that's talking about trained people to do these things. Are you talking about new people that will work with the forward group that are people who have already had this training that you'll bring in? Or training people that already have positions and switching? Do you have any details about? I'm thinking money and people. And so, or is that to be fleshed out at this point?
It's to be fleshed out, but my guess is that it would be both. If I think specifically with the unit and the AD, I mean, some of the folks that are doing this work now are excellent and have been directly involved, but they've also spoke to the fact that given the number of schools and the optimal ratios we've seen in other places that are doing similar work, there'll need to be more people. Now, if they're repurposed from other things that they're doing or they're entirely new people, I think that remains to be seen as we develop the job descriptions and take stock of what talent we already have.
I have to say, just because I've been knee-deep in academic distress now for a few years and spent so much time looking at all of the data surrounding schools and districts during academic distress, this is so great because these are the things that stump us all along the way. The process, the supports and interventions, the evaluation of progress, none of that is there for us now. And it doesn't feel transparent, it doesn't feel fair, it's constantly-- I mean, I think those of us on the academic distress committee, we really struggle with making sure that our process is the same for every district that comes before us. It's critical that we do that. But we need a roadmap. And Mr. Key will be the first to tell you that their hands are full. And so will Ms. Barnes and Mr. Harvey. I mean, it's-- Mr. Harvey told me the other day, they're losing four people, I think, off of his team. There's constant turnover. We've just got to focus on getting the right people in the right seats and paying them enough money so that they'll stay. And Mr. Key told me the other day that they almost lost a critical member of the team to be a middle school principal in northwest Arkansas. So, you know, we've got to be able to recruit and retain the talent with the skill set needed to do this job. It's not easy, and it's going to be hard for us all to get there, but it's going to be worth doing. We're only as good as the information that we receive from the school improvement specialists. So if we're lacking in that area, we really can't do our job. So you've hit the nail on the head.
Well, we're excited to review the full portfolio. Like I said, this is a taste. There's a lot more that underlies this, and we're eager to go through every line of it with each of you all.
So piggybacking off that question, thank you again so much for this report and all the effort that you all have put in to get us to this point. And it's because of the exact partnership that Ms. Saviors is hitting on and how saddened I am and still in denial that Mr. Davis is stepping down from the board if I have my way. Exactly. Kathy, what did you have to do? No, just joking. But no, but on a serious note, we know how much Mr. Davis has brought to the table being a liaison. And I just wonder, because I know our new chairwoman, Newton, had brought up the whole point of committees and assignments. I'm sorry, getting over an allergy cold. I just wonder if there's value there, if you all found that valuable as well, that having a point person within the state board, and if so, is that a conversation we should have about in the case that we can't keep Mr. Davis, which it's looking like we probably are not, then finding somebody else to be that liaison? Would that be helpful? Is that a conversation we should be having?
Try to suggest.
That's something that we've discussed, the present chair and I have discussed, and it's our intent to have that, to continue to be a relationship with the liaison from the board unless you have or until we're notified.
We would love-- we need that, I'll say very directly. I think in terms of who that is going forward, it's up to you all. I think as you all dive in and really see the full report, it might put you all in a better position to decide who's best or who has the greatest appetite to do that role. But we do need that, there's no question. It's been a really helpful relationship.
It feels like it becomes even more important with implementation, right?
Yeah, and communication too, yeah.
You know, in spirit, just an idea, we may see as we get into the full content of this, there could be more than one person that takes certain pieces of some of this work. That may be a sensible arrangement, too. We'll need to get into the content together, but I think we should kind of maintain an open and creative mind about what that partnership could look like with the board as a whole and with individual members.
Mr. Chair, the work that Dr. Kimbrel had begun with Mr. Tolbert, the Office of Attentive Support, their recommendation in this document is in keeping with that effort that had begun. But as you know, Mr. Tolbert, he's one person, I think he has two people in his organization. It just, we can't tackle what needs to be tackled out there. And frankly, the pre-academic distress is where we really need to be focusing on getting the support out there to those schools and those districts. So we look forward to continuing to develop the path forward on this, and I appreciate the work that they really have worked hard, really have worked hard on this.
I agree. I think the pre-academic distress piece here is the most exciting innovation in a lot of ways in terms of, we hope that a lot of those pre-ADs never become ADs, right? I mean, if it goes right, that the corrections are made before it ever reaches that point, and that there's so much awareness by the time it does reach that point that I think that no community could deny that they were not forewarned that their schools were on that path.
And I think some of that happens now, Dr. Barth, with Dr. Wild and the work that they do. What we find is that you can make recommendations, but if the recommendations aren't followed, in many cases, we are limited in being non-prescriptive. We can be very much so on a recommendation standpoint, but even then, you offer recommendations, and some districts have more capacity than others to implement those recommendations. So I think that's probably some of what they have found in the work that they have done. So we have pieces in place to try to get some of that work accomplished. I think some of what's going to need to happen is to explore in our statutory provisions, what authority is there, what's not there. Really, the authority doesn't truly kick in until you hit that academic distress label. And if there's a little more influence that the department can offer before they get there to be partners with them to help avoid that final destination that we never want them to get to, I think that would be very helpful in this context.
And I agree. And I think also that while individuals within school leadership or within the school may know they're in danger, I think we've got to do some things to let the full community know so that the community's not caught off guard, because I think we know, the community can also be a big part of being brought in as allies in stopping the bleeding and beginning to turn schools around. So I think that whole thing, including possibility of statutory change there and enhanced power for the board in that regard, I think is really helpful.
Did you all make any use in all of the effective schools research?
I believe we did. As I think about the international examples and also the case studies, yes, we did. I'm researching back because I'm trying to remember the discussions that the committee had in this, but I'm almost sure we did. I'll follow up with you and talk about exactly--
Because with the implementation group, that research along with the things that you're doing, there's no point in you reinventing the wheel, because it's valid and has been redone twice since the initial. But it helps educators when it's not just coming from on high, but it's coming from people who actually have been there and done that.
Yes. Well, that general principle has just been a cornerstone of our work in all this, because there's just entirely too much work to reinvent, and there's things luckily that prove that what we're trying to achieve here is possible in the state and elsewhere, if you know where to look. And so we've leaned on that very hard.
Quick final question. Obviously, see all the individual recommendations. Have you all begun to grapple at all with the alternative learning environment issue, which is something that this board has had on its, it's kind of on the back burner, right? The moment we know it regularly pops to the front in terms of how to deal with alternative learning environments in terms of academic distress? Are any of the recommendations really kind of deal with those schools?
There are none that specifically call them out, but when we looked at our research and we looked at what it would need to help all of our schools, particularly our most struggling, succeed, I'm confident that a lot of what we have in here will be directly applicable. In terms of the type of talent we need to develop and recruit, in terms of the breadth of interventions that we looked at that are research-based, that work for kids with all variety of challenges, I'm certain that we have some stuff in here that is directly applicable to schools, but we didn't limit. I don't believe there are any recommendations that are limited specifically or tailored precisely for alternative environments.
Okay, all right. Well, good report. Thank you. Kathy, Cory, thank you guys. You know, we started about a year ago on this. I guess it was July, so it's been 12 months. But just really very happy, very pleased with the progress you've made and the direction and the inclusiveness. I just don't know, it couldn't have been done any better.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So we've got now Report Six on the Educator Preparation Performance Report. Ms. Pfeffer.
Good morning. I have another handout that might be useful, so I'm going to send this around. And before I get started, I wanted to also recognize Dr. Frank Servideo from my division. And I think he's right here, yes. I really have to give him credit for the work that is going into all of our data collection and data analysis. He gathers so much information and shares it, and then I have more questions for him, and he goes back and gets more data and shares it. So I really think that we're making a lot of progress in pulling together the kind of information that we need to ask questions and to try to make the very best decisions that we can. So the handout I just gave you is kind of an illustration on the different ways, the different kinds of preparation programs that we have in our state. We have the traditional higher education preparation programs, the non-traditional that are, can be a Masters of Arts in Teaching or another type of accelerated teacher program. And then you have some other routes there. So a lot of different ways that people who are interested in becoming an educator can be prepared to get to the place that they want to be. One of the issues that we've grappled with and that I've spent a lot of time learning over the past year is that, starting this August, this is the first time that all of the higher education preparation programs had to be redesigned to meet the changes that came about in licensure that started with the 2010 task force. So it's sometimes hard to forget that, okay, we know we changed from a P4 license to a K6, but we're just now seeing the results of those changes because all of the higher ed programs have had to be revised. So as of August, if all of the ones that are still under review or approved, we will have a total of 507 programs through institutions of higher education. In August of 2014, we had 588 programs. So the reduction in the programs is not necessarily limiting the opportunities, it's just we had a lot of programs that were consolidated. And with that, you have a lot of changes that go about. So it's been a little bit of a challenge over the past year to make sure that we had everything in place so that we weren't going to have any issues with educator preparation programs. The report that you have, and I think you have access to it on the agenda, this is the second year that we've published what we call the EPR report, the Educator Preparation Performance Report. And there are some additions to the report this year. We've tried to add some data, additional data that will help us as we look at the ways our teachers are prepared. So it includes traditional and non-traditional data. We've tried to make it so that the data is meaningful. We've tried to make it so that the data is meaningful in making those decisions. It's one thing just to put the average pass rates on a practices exam, but it's another to put it in some kind of context to show, okay, how does this compare to a national mean score? Or how does this compare to the average pass rate for the state? And some of the other things that we're looking at are not just for an individual institution, but on the statewide report, what does this tell us overall when we look at a picture of how educators are being prepared? So there's just a few things in the report that I wanted to highlight that I feel are going to be beneficial to us at the ADE as we continue to work with our, all of our preparation programs and make decisions to help them do their jobs better. If we've got some requirements that are limiting them and we need to sit down and look at those, we want to be able to have data to talk about. Each of the educator preparation programs have their own report as well, and those reports go into even more detail. And our plan is to bring them all together sometime this fall and spend a couple of days reviewing so that not only is it just a look at, okay, you're, we don't want this to be viewed as, you know, you're a good program, you're a bad program. We want this to be, what about your program? And especially as we look at data over time, what are some things that we can see that are really good and what might we learn from each other? And if there are things that look bad one year, if we're seeing a decline in one year, is that a one-year anomaly? Or is that the beginning of a trend that we need to start looking at now? So just a couple of highlights from the plan. If you look on page four, we included data about teacher attrition. And we know that this is not something that goes back to any one program, but it's data that we're wanting to watch. And so we're looking at the percent of teachers who leave after one year of teaching, after three years, and after five years. Now, again, this is a very broad look. And as we, as we go through the next year, what we want to start doing is asking questions about, okay, can we start bringing this data into each institution? Can we start tracking teachers back to the, either the higher ed program or to the non-traditional program where they were prepared? And then over time, can we see trends in that data? What is it telling us about our overall preparation? Are we preparing teachers who come and stay with the profession? So, you know, there's a lot of different things to look at. As a state, we know we need to support teachers so that we can retain them. But we also, that's very valuable information for each individual preparation program. Another addition we had this year is on page seven. And again, what we tried to do was put things in context and take data from public schools, preparation programs, overall state data. And we started looking at demographic information because we know from our work with equitable access that, you know, sometimes we have teachers who may be prepared and they may be prepared to teach a grade level or content, but then when they get to a school or district, if they don't also have the cultural competence to be able to get involved within a community, that can put up barriers and make it challenging. And so as we look at this, just at a very high level, we can see there is a difference in the demographics of educators in our preparation programs versus teachers currently in the field and then demographics of our students. So, and it's just, it's just another piece of data to consider as we look at attracting people into the pipeline. Something else that I found very helpful for me on page nine, we've always looked at our completers, but one of the things I wanted to know, instead of just knowing the number of completers over a three-year period, what does that really mean in terms of the teachers that are prepared statewide? So what this does is takes, it takes each of our programs, traditional and non-traditional, shows the three-year average number of people who complete the educator program and what percent is that of the state total who are prepared. And I'll just give you an example of why I found it helpful data for me. The Apple program, the ADE's non-traditional Apple program. When I first started looking at information when I took this job, we were, we were going to have to look at some things in terms of budgeting because we were, we were starting to spend more than we were bringing in for, to run this program. And, you know, over the next few years, we were looking at some serious shortfalls. So if we're not careful and we're reactionary, it would be like, oh, maybe we need to not, maybe we not, you know, don't need to have this program. But with this data, 9.76% of the teachers who are prepared in the state of Arkansas are being prepared by this program. And when you look at that in comparison to other preparation programs, we're preparing a big percentage of teachers through our Apple program. So we, you know, if, if we're not careful and we're not deliberate about what we're doing, we could cut out something that is definitely having an impact on the teachers that we're preparing. So important information. And probably the last one that I really am spending a lot of time looking at now, and I think is important, is on page 15. And this information is going back to the number of teachers who completed programs of study for each type of preparation program, and then tracking the number from that program who were employed the next year in an Arkansas public school and looking at the percent change. And I think this is one of those reports that you don't want to react to just for one year, and this is the only year that we had this, but over time. Are we continuously seeing downward trends? Are we still, you know, or are we consistently seeing large percentages of these teachers who are prepared going to work in an Arkansas public school? And when we look at it from the state perspective, we see that of all those who complete a preparation program in 2014, 15, 60% of them went to work in an Arkansas public school. So, you know, where is that other 40%? And again, if you just react, you think, good grief, you know, they're, you know, they're just not teaching. But then you, we have to stop and say, okay, we don't know if they're going to private schools, we don't know if they're going out of state. So there's a lot more information that we're going to need. And that's helping us to start with that plan of how do we build our data system so that it's going to provide us with information that will continue to help us make good decisions? So that's, that's an overview. There's a whole lot more in this report. And again, I think that, as with any report or any information, it provides us with a lot of data and it's a good source for us to have conversations and look to make the best decisions that we can to continue to have quality preparation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pfeffer. Ms. Sabres?
Great report. There's a lot of information here about individual preparation programs. Is that information communicated to those programs?
Yes. A lot of the information we have here came from them in their Title II reports. And the benefit of that is it's coming from them. And so they're engaged with us, especially with Frank during the process of creating the report. So there aren't any surprises to them about the data because it's what they're reporting to us. The limitations to that is because we do have to get that from cycle reports or Title II reports, that is reported in the fall and it's going to reflect the previous year oftentimes. So it's not as current data as what we would like to have.
This just tells such a story.
It does.
And if you're willing to really dig in and try to understand and particularly understand where our best prepared teachers are coming from and, you know, even the satisfaction, the novice satisfaction segment, I thought was really interesting. It's, I'm wondering, what is your next step? You've got all this great information. And then how do you use this as leverage with deans for colleges of education?
Our next step will be to bring them in and try to set up a time when we can have, and I'm thinking one day's probably not enough, you know, a couple of days, and really facilitate the discussion about what are we seeing, talking about it from a statewide perspective and then down to individual programs. And even here, even when you look at the individual programs, we don't get down to even all the specifics because at every institution that has an educator preparation program, they have multiple programs that they're preparing educators for. And every institution looks different. Also with our non-traditional programs, we have different, they have different areas where people are certified and in different schools and districts. So I think our next step is going to need to be to come together, look at it, and have discussions about how does this, as a state, how does this as individual institutions and just educator preparation in general, what, I think we'll need to set some goals together and keep working. And another goal is just for us to continue to build our data system so that we can link between higher ed preparation, school districts, and outcomes eventually for students.
Don't you have that information now?
In about five different places. So trying to bring it all together and so that it's current data. Because this is still, some of this data is from just this past 14, 15 school year, but some of it would be from the previous year. So we're looking backwards and sometimes a little bit too much in the past.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? Great, great report. Man, good stuff. All right. So that brings us to Report Seven. Dr. Jones, I see you finally joined us this morning.
Have a girl.
You know, I was sleeping in.
Well, I know. You know, you had a busy day yesterday and didn't have anything to do this morning.
Sure, sure.
So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. They picked the worst picture they could find to put in the paper. Thank you. I think they picked them up.
No, the worst pictures are of us hanging on the wall.
Okay.
Well, I take it we didn't do anything to complicate your life yesterday, did we? Okay.
Life goes on. Okay. So I do have a report this morning. And for the good news, schools of innovation, as a result of Act 601 of 2013, we have the responsibility of identifying schools of innovation. And we had 10 applications this year. And we had a really good process. We have kind of two levels of the process. First, the Office of Options goes through the applications to make sure they have pieces that they're supposed to have as required by law and lots of communication back and forth. And then we have an internal committee that goes through and evaluates each, evaluates each of the applications. And we made contact if there were questions for all of these that were recognized as schools of innovation by the commissioner. We did have interviews with them online. And I'm pleased to announce Fayetteville High School, ALE. Very large ALE, and it's an interesting proposal. I can't wait to see the results and the data from this. And we do collect data every year. Remember, this is a four-year period. And what we hope to see is progress and success over four years in order for the commissioner to renew that school of innovation. And basically, Fayetteville ALE, they are, as a motivational factor, students have perfect attendance four days out of the week. On Friday, they do not have to report to school. However, on Friday, they are having programs, lots of programs to, their extra additional community volunteer service, college visits and so forth. And the OEP is working, no, the Office of Innovations, Denise Arrolas' group is working with Fayetteville to help stabilize that schedule. And so they're working alongside of them. I'm pleased to hear that. White County Central, a really good proposal. They have been working on this for some time, where they have worked with the Thea Foundation and their A-plus program to integrate the arts throughout the curriculum, throughout all the lesson plans. And it's really, what a place to go to school. I can't wait to see results from that program as well. And then Bentonville Cooper Elementary, targeting improvement with special ed performance. And so where there were some restrictive regulations, they received some flexibility to really be inclusive with all special ed students. And so that is one target area. Physical education is embedded throughout the program. And we're anxious to see results on that as well. And then Sonora Middle School, very interesting in Springdale School District. Good proposal. And really, it revolves around individualized student plan. And the teachers are teaming together to provide instruction. And it was a really good interview to talk about what they're doing there. And their differences are, it's whatever the student needs. And so all good proposals. It is tough to make it as a school of innovation, and we try to name as many as possible that still fit the law, but it is down to four this year. And so we're pleased to follow those throughout the years. Are there any questions on that? Yes, ma'am?
Now, these, thank you so much for that report. Now, these are on top of the ones that were approved from last year, correct? Because it was, it's a multi-year process?
Correct. Yes, every year.
So these are just the ones entering in this year for first year?
And I reflected on the ones that were named as schools of innovation last year. And truly, they're doing some magnificent work. And I don't want to point out all of them because I surely would miss someone, but when I think of the things that are, the schools that are doing mastery learning, and I think of the schools that are promoting based on students learning their skills, it's no, like Warren, it's no longer grade by grade. So you're now, in the third grade, it's, did students learn? Really good concept. We really want to share that so that other schools learn from schools of innovation. And I'm going to start naming and make some people mad, but we have one that was a school of innovation in Springdale, many in Springdale, but they're having great success. We've done some school visits, our office has, and online learning. They have a large number of students that are enrolling, not just for remedial purposes this summer, so they're continuing school all year voluntarily because they want to. And so we're seeing success. The point is, we want to communicate that success out, do school visits so that other schools might steal some of their ideas. And really, that's the whole point.
And if I might ask a piggyback question on that, because, you know, one of the things that stands out when I see this list, and if I recall correctly from last year as well, a high percentage of these are in Northwest Arkansas, correct?
Yes.
Which, you know, a certain amount, you know, me being from Northwest obviously takes some pride, but concern in the sense that I think there was the aspiration that it was some of our distressed school districts and such that would take this opportunity. So I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of whether it's these ones that are rising to the top in terms of acceptance, or are we not even getting the applications from some of these other districts where, you know, the flexibility really may give them that space to take, you know, and address some of these tremendous challenges that they're facing?
Of the 10, I'm sorry, of the 10 applicants this year, we did have one from the Delta that did not have all the pieces required. And even after notification and trying to work with that, the application was not complete. It requires, one of the pieces requires the approval of their school board of education. And we just can't move forward if they're, if it's required within the legislation or within the rules at least. And so we did have one. We don't have a great number. We don't have a great number of applicants. And I don't know if, we have a large number this year when we look at letters of intent for conversion charters and charters. Okay, these are my latest statistics, and I might be wrong off just a couple minutes, but in all, we have 22 letters of, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I hate to quote those right now, but as I, we have, I was talking about who's in place, but I hate to quote those. I need those in front of me. But we do see an increase in the letters of intent to establish charter or conversion charter this year.
From the Delta or other academic?
From across the state.
From across the state.
This reminds me of what Ms. Vault said this morning, because I haven't been around the 69 years she has, but I'm especially excited about the Bentonville because between 69 and 73, we did an experimental and a control group showing the difference in the gains that children make in reading, particularly children who were dyslexic, autistic, and learning disabilities. And I was fortunate enough to get to do the group that did the gross motor and the fine motor and all those extra things. And my class, not because of me, but because of the innovation, grew two and a half to three years in a nine-month period where the other classroom did not gain that much.
That's remarkable.
So it's, and we've tried to help people understand and push this and everything. And they just, I mean, there were times when you could just have a child walk a balance beam three times and sit down and he could read things that before that he couldn't, not because he didn't know how, but because the assimilation in the, in the brain and those functions needed that gross motor focus to be able to do the reading. those functions needed that gross motor focus to be able to do the reading.
I really do see changes happening in the state, and many times you just have to see it working in order to take that next step and do it in your own district. And so I expect growth in innovation across the state.
Well, and I just want to echo what my colleague from Northwest Arkansas mentioned as well, my concern around ensuring or figuring out how we can get other states involved. As you sort of said, when you see it happening in other districts, you hopefully begin to think along those lines, and it's sort of the rock in the lake, right? If you're closer to the rock, those ripples are much larger. And I'm wondering if we have a situation in which, because we are not seeing the type of, or, you know, the application and the approval for schools of innovation around the state, are we, are we having the same type of effect around innovation in places that we really need to have that type of effect?
We are not yet. And you're right, it's a sense of community, and I will tell you that the business community and higher ed and the P-21 task force in Northwest Arkansas have created an environment of competition. They're going to be the best, and they're competing against each other.
They have a vision.
They have a vision. And we hope that, first of all, that's going, that's already one of our goals for our ERZs, and the ERZ in Northwest Arkansas is highly involved in that 20, P-21 initiative. That's our goal for each one of the ERZs in this upcoming year, to build that same community, not with, with just instructors, but with the business and higher ed. So we see that, and we agree, we need to promote innovation throughout the state. Another thing that, we have some plans with schools of innovation and their programs. We have to get in there and take video, quick promotional video, so that other people can see it firsthand throughout the state. And when they see it, we hope they can say, we can do that as well, and let's put a plan together. Because truly, the schools of innovation application is not that complex once you get into the, to the process, but it does really have to be an innovative plan. We're not giving these away because we don't think that was the intent of the legislation when it was created.
All right.
All right. And then I know that you had the opportunity to read the report. Let me get to the point. Okay. Act 414 of 2013 established the Public School Health Services Advisory Committee to survey the health needs of students in Arkansas. And if you read some of those numbers, they were astounding. The number of 911 calls, the number of students with chronic conditions throughout our schools. And we do have Paula Smith here, who is heavily involved in this survey and this information, if you have additional questions on this subject. Certainly, it establishes the, the need for nurses within the schools and the big jobs that they have, and, and it's not just teaching every day that goes on, it's taking care of the healthcare needs of students throughout Arkansas. Okay? If there are no questions on that, I did provide just a special ed update to let you know that, as you know, we are going to end a star for our ACTCET plan throughout the state. One piece of that, we're trying to combine all of our efforts so that we don't have multiple platforms for multiple things with pilot schools. Those that were pilots this year, they will submit their application for Part B funds through that end to star program. It's just advancement, it's that they are trying to keep up and modernize our systems throughout the state and be compliant with federal law. And then the, and the next piece that I've shared with you, I think you heard this yesterday when we talked about our Arkansas science standards, that we are heavy into professional development throughout the state to prepare for the rollout of this. And so we can say educators have prepared for this for a long time, and I even cut some of this down. We have a lot of science going on throughout the state to prepare for that. And then a couple other little things from UBD. UBD is a continued effort that has been going on for a couple of years, and it teaches school districts, teachers, instructional specialists, a framework for which they can create their own instructional units. It's planning backwards, a very solid plan for creating their own curriculum. And then the last little note about guidance and counseling, we are making a great effort to work with ACE, Career and Technical Ed. We meet with them frequently. We have regular ongoing meetings, but we're also, it's not enough for us just to, for the directors to know what's going on, it has to make it to the schools. And so we've involved the guidance, counseling, and so they communicate a lot with counselors within the schools. Where are we changing courses? What's going on with computer science? What courses do they have to have? What are the requirements? So we're making sure that that is communicated via the counselors, as well as every time we go to co-ops or sharing with superintendents, and then through commissioners' memos. And so that just speaks to that effort a little bit.
Do you know how many counselors are required per number of students in a high school?
It is. I would hate to quote that off the top of my head.
It's like three.
Yeah. It's over there. What is it? That's what I thought. I was, yeah.
That's crazy. That's crazy. I mean, if we're talking about really preparing kids for success, that, I don't understand that.
My opinion. That has been said before.
Yes. When you, I don't know how much was done or not done in the legislature in 15 with regard to the, any updates, changes in the training and implementation on the dyslexia front. I know that there were some recommendations made. I don't know if they just got carried through. I have no idea. But if there have been the changes, could you include those in your report in July?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Quick thing, just back on the science, professional development, just how important that is, you know, teachers are going to become the most important messengers in terms of, of, you know, the wisdom of, of moving towards our revised Arkansas State Standards. And so having those teachers really confident to teach is so important. So that's a really, 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 really big piece.
They, they did great work.
All right. Dr. Jones, thank you very much. Glad you snuck it in. All right. Last but not least, of course, is our Teacher of the Year report.
So what I would like to do, if I may, show the video, because it kind of streamlines the whole presentation. I'll pass around the summary of some of the findings I've had this year, and I will present after the video.
Teacher leadership is the opportunity to share ideas, think, reflect, and grow.
Teacher leadership is the opportunity to share ideas, think, reflect, and grow.
Teacher leadership is a resource that allows teachers to guide and empower both students and fellow leaders.
Teacher leadership is empowering me to be a better teacher to my students and a better leader in my building.
What I see in the people that come to this program is that, what I see in the people that are passionate about what they do, is that, finds people who are very passionate about what they do. They want things to be better. If I'm really feel led to be a classroom teacher. How do I lead from my classroom? And that doesn't mean that someone expects me to then go and become a principal or something else. I can be a leader from my classroom. And often times, we get people, and they even, they even know they're leaders. They won't see that themselves, but somebody saw it, and they encourage them to come, and they make it through the process to be here. So the thing about, and the Leadership Academy that I love, the professional development here, is that I've been back seven years in a row. It's never exactly the same. Because the leaders are always very changing and trying to find ways to teach us. And every time I come back, I learn something, and I add another layer, and every time I come back, I learn something new, and I add another layer in my professionalism, and it just, it's been very inspirational. It's helped me, you know, to run national boards, it's helped me, it's helped move my mindset and my growth as an educator.
For me, teacher leadership is a growing process that I have every day. When I wake up, I can't wait to try a different process with my students that I've learned at the institute, and it may be something I've learned yesterday that I might even tweak it for the next day. And I feel like every day that if I can try to grow, my students would benefit from that and the other teachers.
I believe in the teachers of our state. I mean, they're extremely, when we work with them, they're, they're coming in here and they're giving their heart and soul to the work that we're doing. They're passionate, and I think we need to create opportunities where we value their thinking, and when they have determined what they're needing to work on and learn about, we help them find the ways to connect to those resources.
Teacher leadership is passionate educators taking the initiative to make the change in the world and the difference in children's lives. Teacher leadership is planting to be a positive influence in my school districts.
I think Jonathan has set the record for Teacher of the Year making the most cool videos. He's got to set a high standard for our next Teacher of the Year. I'm just telling you.
I'll still do, I'll still do.
He's like, got this.
They have me work last round.
You got this acting career or something. All right. Jonathan, your rec.
So as most of you know, I really value teacher leadership and the conversation in the state about teacher leadership and what that means. These videos are profiles in teacher leadership, and I thought about what that really means. What does it mean to be a teacher leader at the core? And so I began this year with the end in mind, knowing I would have to do this presentation, and I would present on professional development. And if I'm going to single out in teacher leaders, should I go the Iowa route and have us do something where a compensation system for people who step up and do teacher leadership as a vocation? And I thought that's kind of short-sighted, because teaching itself is leadership. So I took this approach. What are the fundamentals? And in my view, the research would indicate autonomy, mastery, and purpose, and these are the three prongs of adult leadership, which inevitably spurs teacher leadership. So what do we know? We know that the best PD is job embedded, and that's become kind of colloquialized in education, but it's job embedded. The culture of a school impacts student and adult learning. And obviously, if we want students to be learners, we have to also make adults lifelong learners. Right now, here's what's so encouraging to me. Right now, in every school, we can do this. This is possible. So we've heard presentations in the past where there's new ideas, brand-new ideas, and trust me, I love brand-new ideas, but I want to make this as empirically based and as specific as possible. What I'm talking about in this presentation is possible right now with no new dollars from any legislator or any group or anything. We can do this tomorrow. So what is it? It's really rooted in the action research cycle, so let's take a look at that if we will. The top piece being identifying focus areas. And we talk about PGPs, what that means, professional growth plans, you hear a lot about that. That's what this number one point is. It's getting your, your focus area, and what is your ideal state in that focus area? Where do you want to see yourself grow? Secondly, you have to assess the current reality, and that takes observation, that takes personal reflection, that may take video of yourself, that takes being honest. Then you create a plan, and then obviously in big letters, kind of like the Nike slogan, you just do it. You get in there and you have to do it. And that's really what's, this presentation is about, doing the work, not the sit-and-get mentality, but doing it, and obviously analyzing and that sort of thing. But notice how it's a cycle. It's circular. It goes around and around and around, because if you don't continue to grow, you'll stagnate, and so will your students. So autonomy, let's talk about the first prong, this three-pronged approach, autonomy. So teachers are players, they're not pawns in the chess game. We need to be the leaders of our own instruction, but we need people in the classrooms who are willing to help us do that. And so I heard what we were just talking about here with the Delta and those things. What I've seen in some schools in the Delta and some underserved schools, we don't have some of the leadership there, instructional leadership that's going to help teachers really grow in a meaningful fashion. And that was some of the questions yesterday I had about the Palm Bluff situation, how are leaders in those buildings helping? Currently, the ADE rules, I've checked with Ms. Kaufman, I've checked with Kevin Beaumont, currently the ADE rules allow for flexibility with exactly what I'm talking about. This is, this is what's so, obviously, I'm so passionate about, because we can do this tomorrow. In the current model, teachers can on their own professional development, so why aren't we doing it uniformly? I have a lot of quotes here. We've ran, you know, a little longer this morning, and great celebrations. I won't go through all of the quotes, you can read them, they're in your packet. So let's take autonomy. What are the, there's four things with autonomy that are so important. One is the task. Quite simply, with what we're doing in professional development, is it meaningful? When you sit through it, how does it make you feel? Is it meaningful? Does it promote ongoing adult learning? And I think this is something that really gets teachers frustrated. We sit down and we think, okay, how is this going to make me a better teacher tomorrow? And how will this impact my professionalism over the course of the semester or the year? And we're pretty smart. We can decide when it's going to and when it's not going to, and we get frustrated with PD when it doesn't do that. Richard Elmore at the bottom says, PD should be evaluated continuously, continuously, and primarily on the basis of the effect it has on student achievement, not compliance credit. And again, these are things that everybody knows, but I'm so passionate about, not compliance credit, ongoing learning. Time. Are we aligning our vision with our schedule? How do our daily schedules, how are some of these schools of innovation tackling the professional development issue? That's what I want to know. How can we make sure job-invented PD is a part of this innovation plan? Secondly, is the focus of the work not predetermined on the amount of time? That's a great point. Is the student the constant or is time the constant? What do we really value there? Technique. How do we support adult learning? How does it feel, sound, and look? All these things impact what teachers, how they view their professional development. It makes them feel a certain way, it looks a certain way, and it sounds a certain way. And team. Do we trust adults to learn? And that's a question I think principals and legislators and everybody else really has to ask themselves. Do we really trust the adults in the room to learn? And in my humble opinion, since I'm leaving in about two weeks, I think we would, I think we would pay teachers more if we really believed that they were capable of owning their own professional development and their own learning. So that's, that's just my two cents. So how do leadership styles encourage or discourage productive team learning? That's a, that's a great and important point to make. That's a great question to ask yourselves. Is your leadership style discouraging team learning? And do teams feel compliant or autonomous? And I will not go in a soapbox there. All right, now FedEx time. This one is something I really want to talk about with all you. It's very interesting. I know Mr. Davis knows what I'm talking about with FedEx time. It's called FedEx time because of same-day delivery. And you'll see the, these groups, Google, 3M, Atlassian, Best Buy, they all do FedEx time. FedEx time is you have creative think tank time in self-selected groups, self-selected pairs, or whatever you want to do, and you just think about how you can be progressive in your organization. Well, why don't we do this on the school level? If we know there's community issues, if we know there's problems on, at the school level with culture or whatever else, why aren't we taking time to use teacher voice to figure out how we can be creative to solve these problems? And again, that goes back to the, the bit, do we trust teachers to own their own learning? So the problem solving is based on interest and passions. What's wrong with your interests or passions? I would posit that all of you are on this board because of your interest and your passions, and we are all in education because of our interests and our passions. How can the leadership of building and districts make sure we're incorporating interests and passions? So the results, let's talk about that. The post-it note. All of us use post-it notes probably every day, every other day. That came from this FedEx time, thinking about how they could better the corporation. Obviously, sales went through the roof for 3M. The post-it note, Gmail, Google News, Google Maps, Instant Messenger, all of these things came through time that wasn't devised strictly for what you do as a corporation, it was outside-the-box thinking. I want to enter into a school. I want to be in a school system. I want to be in a state where we trust our educators to come up with unique and specific result, or processes to make sure our schools and communities are being served. A quote from a Google executive says, basically, everything good in the last seven years came from FedEx time. And this is the Google executive here saying, our profit has increased, our brand has increased, our net worth has increased because of 20% of our time where we're not mandating what our employees are supposed to be doing and thinking about. And again, this is so exciting to me, this can be counted as professional development. Not as the required 60 or the required 36 as it is, but above and beyond PD hours, as long as it's aligned to school or community improvement. I'm so excited about this. All right. So it's outside the box, obviously allowing time for teachers to be in self-selected groups. And this is, the second bullet point is so important. Preferably, it is not in your content area. So I'm, you know, a pretty decent English teacher, drama teacher and all that, preferably, I'd be doing something else. So maybe I'm thinking about community involvement, I'm thinking about legislative issues, something like that, where I'm really able to get some outside passions that aren't just in English-language arts. And, you know, a poem, because I'm an English teacher, I do love this though, I think it's worthy, it's worthy to read. "You need not see what someone is doing to know if it is his vocation. You only have to watch his eyes. A cook mixing a sauce, a surgeon making a primary incision, a clerk completing a bill of lighting, where that's..." of lighting, wear that same rapt expression forgetting themselves in a function. How beautiful it is that eye on the object look." My colleagues, teachers all across the state are in this profession because they have their eye on that object look. So how might we as a board, how might we as a state, how might we as policymakers figure out ways to encourage our districts to increase autonomy, continual mastery, and purpose? So why mastery? Control leads to compliance, autonomy leads to mastery, that's simply put. But here's some numbers. U.S. statistic, 50% of employees are not engaged at work. Now, that's not just in education, that's just largely defined. That's lawyers, that's whoever else, 50%. And 20 are actively disengaged. So if you have an actively disengaged employee, they're disgruntled, they're at the water cooler, they're saying negative things, they might even be going out of their way to sabotage someone. And that's not a, a school that I want to live in. And, and that's an estimated $30 billion in lost productivity. Mastery is a mindset. Carol Dweck's work with mindset has really influenced the way I view teaching, the growth mindset versus the fixed mindset, encouraging effort, not innate intelligence. And this third point is so important. Some people come up to me and they've seen me teach and get all passionate and stand on chairs and do all those things. And they say, "It just seems like some sort of magic." I'm like, "No, no, you're making me sound like some sort of..." No, it's not magic. It's effort. It's being reflective. It's figuring out what works with your students and how to get the message across to them and how you can continually grow. So when we see great educators, what's our first thought? Oh, it's just them, that's magic, that's how they've developed. Why aren't we trying to bottle that up and figure out how we can, we can try harder, we can have better effort to help all of our teachers grow? Emphasis on growth, not on magic. Again, some more quotes. "Teaching effectiveness is malleable. We need to align practices and schedules to reflect this truth." Gail liked this quote, is she around here somewhere? Just, I'll mention it because she liked it. "What people believe shapes what people achieve allows us to work through our difficulties." If we really have this vision for what we're doing in the school, we'll put up with some, some negative things. Because we know in the end, we have that vision for success. Mastery is ongoing. We will always reach, but never quite achieve full mastery. This is something we need, we really need to understand. Is our 40-year plan, our 20-year plan, or whatever, big enough to where we know we won't reach it tomorrow? Now, put that in the context of professional development. Do we have an audacious enough goal to believe that we want to get so good at PD and how we do it that we're not going to achieve it tomorrow with a quick fix? I don't know the answer to that, but obviously, I'll talk about it because I have the time. So let's think about Michael Jordan Cezanne and William Shakespeare. They all worked boldly, continually in the pursuit of excellence. And this third point I find so interesting. Michael Jordan, when he stopped feeling like he was growing, what did he do? Quit twice. He felt, "I'm the best in the world, I'm not getting any better, nobody's challenging me, drop the mic, I'm out of here. I'm going to play baseball." What? And I get the connection with his father and all that, but he was the greatest in the world and he got tired of being the only one pushing himself to be better. Think about attrition, think about retention rates. Do our best educators feel like they're being pushed? Do our best educators feel like they're being appreciated? Action research is the key. So how are our schools approaching PD with action research in mind? "The joy is in the pursuit. Mastery attracts because mastery eludes." If we let failure be okay, it's okay to try new things and fail as long as you're on that action research cycle. And these are obviously more quotes you can read on your own time, they're in that packet. Purpose is the last bullet point. Purpose is the context for autonomy and mastery. If we don't believe in what we're doing, we don't have a direction, then we're going to just be compliant and never engaged. And that's some of the conversations I see on the local level in schools. We talk about PD. And it's always compliance versus engagement, and it's not ongoing. And in some ways, in some ways, the teacher of the year going out into schools and doing PD, even though it can be hands-on, even though it can be great, and even though it can be wonderful, it's still not continuous and it's still not ongoing because I am not an employee of that school district. I am not a coach. I am not in there observing their classroom every day. So we need to rethink, in my estimation, how we view that on a state level and see how that would impact the local level. Richard Elmore, Elmore, I have some quotes from him here. He's obviously a world-renowned researcher in education and PD. I will say this second one because it's really, it really hits me a certain way. "So spending more money on existing professional development activities as much, excuse me, as most are presently designed is unlikely to have any significant effect on either knowledge and skill of educators or on the performance of their students." And there's another, I don't know if I mentioned this quote or not yet, but it's "because it's not centered on classroom practice." I'll say it again, "not centered on classroom practice." Their action research cycle in classroom with your students is what creates the most purpose for PD. So cultivating purpose, how do you do it? These four prongs. Connect teachers to their purposes, allow teachers to grow in their purpose, support their continual growth and their link to their purposes, and show how individual purposes create collective purpose. And it's a lot of, lot of purpose, purpose, purpose. But if we don't make sure we're asking teachers simple questions. "Ms. Mahoney, what are you passionate about in your school?" And then let her talk and listen and help her devise a plan in her PGP about how she can connect her vision to that purpose. I think if we did more of that in the state, we could be even that much more influential. But there are schools that are doing it. The pronoun test, I love this. Robert Reich, the Labor Secretary under Clinton, had the "they" versus "we" mentality. He can walk into an organization and say, "Hey, how they talk about their group? Is it they are doing this or we are doing this?" I've applied the same mentality to schools. When I walk into a school, I'll listen to what they say. It's either usually, and it's spot on, "They make this decision, they, they, they," or "We have made this decision, we have done, we have had collective input." Now, let's apply this mentality to professional development. Is there a "they" mentality in the state of Arkansas? Is there a "we" mentality in the state of Arkansas? Where a local controlled state as far as education goes, do our individual districts feel like it's a "they" mentality toward PD or a "we" mentality toward PD? Again, we've got some of both. A better Arkansas, the hope piece. Job embedded PD supports growth mindset in teachers and we can do it. It's, you know, it's research-based, ADE loves it. Everybody I've talked to at the ADE is in full support of it. They love it. I thought, I honestly thought I would have a little bit of, "What are you talking about, young man?" When I started, but no, everybody's like, "Yes, this is, you're right. This is, this is exactly what we're talking about." So step one, how can we do this? PGP's develop with principals, assistant principals, they'd be ongoing. Part of that 18 PD hours next year is that. PGP's as a guide, teachers would be observed, the whole action research cycle. Step two continued, they are intended for growth, not just evaluation. It's intended for growth, intended for growth. And obviously, feedback is critical. Step three, you come up with a new plan. Step four, you implement it again. And this is part of the test model. It flows seamlessly with tests. So if we're going to do the evaluation system with tests, you can easily have 200 professional development hours because you are targeting your growth every single day in the classroom. I mean, this is, this just makes so much sense to me. But that bolded point at the bottom is so important. The instructional leaders in the building must be knowledgeable. If you don't have instructional leaders, and that can come in many forms, principal, assistant principal, coaches, and even teacher leaders, who are knowledgeable about the process, it's not going to be implemented with fidelity and it's not going to be very effective. So the results, the teachers will become authors of their own PD. It streamlines the evaluation process. PD is growth-oriented, not compliance-based, and it could cut teacher attrition significantly. And that's the research by Richard Ingersoll. He says, "Support, voice are the two biggest factors." So, all of that to say, there's a recommendation. So I feel like, I've sat on the board all year and you guys have been so great to me and wonderful and really appreciated my voice. And I, I've seen a few of these presentations about teachers of the year, and I wanted to make a formal recommendation, not just, well, duh, we know job, job, or excuse me, that professional development should be job embedded, of course. But I want to make a three-pronged recommendation to you all. And here it is in short. One, I would love to see a partnership between ADE, Arkansas Education Co-ops, and the School Board, State Board of Education to identify and highlight examples of job embedded, autonomy-driven, purpose-driven PD, like we've talked about in the presentation, in professional development in Arkansas schools. This could take the form of a possible subcommittee that includes stakeholders from around the state concerning PD. Because I don't feel like professional development is a very attractive topic to talk about in, in school matters a lot, but it's so vital to actual student success. And thirdly, this is just kind of my thinking, it could be monthly, bi-monthly, however you guys would want to do it, but reports to the Board of Education identifying best practices in PD that incorporate action research cycles to improve individual practice. And the Arkansas Leadership Academy could help you guys with this, that's another partner you could, you could list. Because it's not going to happen through legislation, we know that. It's not going to happen through legis, you can't mandate everybody do the right thing, but you can put that social pressure and let, and let there be the, the hope, the highlight of schools all around the state, just like this teacher leadership series. There's schools all around the state who have leaders who are doing these wonderful things, from the Delta, South Arkansas, North Arkansas, Northwest, Central Arkansas. It's happening. It's happening. So let's highlight it. Let's show some people what is possible. And hopefully, that'll spur some momentum and get the ball rolling. And lastly, bold examples will make us better. And I truly believe that if you took this bold action to highlight progressive professional development around the state, it not only would make that school better, those students at those schools better, but students and schools and teachers all around the state better and truly push job embedded PD and truly push teacher leadership because that's what our state truly needs. I think I'm done.
Thank you, Jonathan. You've been an excellent teacher of the year, really. And so, are there questions? Yes, Vicki?
So I appreciate your recommendation and I believe 100% you're exactly right. How do we, I mean, I think we need to think about this because it's, I've long been a proponent of reforming professional development in the state. And this is just a great opportunity for us to really do something creative and be leaders. So I wish that we could maybe think about how to do that going forward. I don't know who in the department we'd be working with. Ivy, maybe?
Yep.
Yeah.
Maybe this is also part of the forward conversation, right? In terms of, you know, again, not just one liaison, maybe the idea of a committee and that maybe might be one piece of, of that.
And just to follow up, and I think we've talked before, probably that greatest challenge is getting the time to do that. If there was some way, we put in all those academic periods every day, the seven periods, what we need is to carve out that time that our teachers can get together to do the FedEx time thinking.
And that's what I'm so encouraged about. Some schools have found ways to do that, very innovative PLCs, which count to do creative thinking. I know Malmell Middle School does some of that, the creative, like FedEx time thinking. It's there. We just got to reach out and find it.
Well, and on that note, because you did reference all the regions of the states, do you have some specific schools that you, you would be able to, and it doesn't necessarily have to be right here in this format, but in these last two weeks, might be able to share, whether it's with Ms. Pfeffer or, or otherwise, or, and you may have that as well, but just, I'd hate to lose that knowledge, you know? And I know we're hopefully not losing you here in Arkansas, but to be able to really take it to the next step from where you've left it here, I think having some of those tangible examples as maybe even a starting place for whatever this committee could look like. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. I had to give him a space of, yeah, to follow up, yeah.
And if I may, I don't want to steal any of, I mean, he, everything he said, amen, yes, I agree. One of the strategies that we have in the Equitable Access Plan is to work with four school district, schools, school district, I don't remember now if it's districts or schools. But what we're going to do is support them to really utilize all the pieces of Bloomboard because that's where the data is all being housed. And then they have access to different, the PGP's there, they have access to different professional development resources. And Kevin Beaumont and I have been working with Bloomboard, and what we're actually going to do is look at more of a competency-based PD so that the, as, as the needs are identified, and we're not talking big PD events. We're talking about resources and support all the way through. So with what you are talking about here, maybe we can follow those four schools, school districts, and work with the faculty there. Because when he said we need to identify places where it's being done really well, hopefully, that this is going to drive that whole cycle of instructional improvement. So I would be happy to work with Jonathan and any of you to help and bring in the school districts so we can actually hear it from them that my evaluation data is helping to identify areas where I can improve, I'm getting the support that I need. And as I change my practice, this is what I see from my students. Because if it doesn't work, then we need to do something else. So it would be a good opportunity and we can follow through.
I would also want to just reiterate those three prongs, because those are very three purposeful prongs that, that I have there. The purpose piece, the continual, the continual masterpiece is what we really focus on. The two others, we don't oftentimes give as much credence. The autonomy piece and the purpose piece are also important in that. The continual master, we go, yes, yes, obviously, you have to be able to do that. But do we really give teachers a little leeway on how they think about their practice and then let them help develop their PGP's? How does that process look? And is that connected to a bigger overall vision for their growth in their profession and their growth of the school? And I don't think those are just abstract ideas. I think there are, are school leaders out there who are really doing that. And I would love to see those come to the forefront of the conversation.
Well, it's my hope you'll be one of those very soon. So, yeah, really good stuff. So thank you. Congratulations, completing a year. And we look forward to, I know the board looks forward to being a partner with you on future endeavors. All right, what else we have, folks? All right, well... All right, without objection, we'll adjourn. We'll take a short break and then I think the Academic Distress Subcommittee will be back. And I encourage, I encourage everyone who can stick around for this to stick around to, because it's, you know, it's important if you have, have a minute. Thank you.
And it just, it's been very inspirational. It's helped me, you know, with national boards, it's helped me, it's helped move my mindset and my growth as an educator.
For me, teacher leadership is a growing process that I have every day. When I wake up, I can't wait to try a different process with my students that I've learned at the institute. And it may be something I'd learned yesterday that I might even tweak it for the next day. And I feel like every day that if I can try to grow, my students will benefit from that and the other teachers.
I believe in the teachers of our state. I mean, they're extremely, when we work with them, they're, they're coming in here and they're giving their heart and soul to the work that we're doing. They're passionate. And I think we need to create opportunities where we value their thinking. And when they have determined what they're needing to work on and learn about, we help them find the ways to connect to those resources.
Teacher leadership is passionate educators taking the initiative to make the change in the world and the difference in children's lives. Teacher leadership is pledging to be a positive influence in my school district.
Teacher leadership is the opportunity to share ideas, think, reflect, and grow.
Teacher leadership is a resource that allows teachers to guide and empower both students and fellow employees.
Teacher leadership is empowering me to be a better teacher to my students and a better leader in my building.
What I see in the people that come through this program is that you find people who are very passionate about what they do. They care about their kids, they care about their schools, they want things to be better. If I'm really feel, feel led to be a classroom teacher.
And that doesn't mean that someone expects me to then go and become a principal or something else. I can be a leader from my classroom. And, you know, oftentimes we get people and they don't even, they don't even know they're leaders, they haven't seen that themselves, but somebody saw it in them and they encouraged them to come and they made it through the process to be here.
So the thing about the Leadership Academy that I love about the professional development here is that I've been back seven years in a row. It's never exactly the same because the leaders are always growing and changing and trying to find new ways to teach us. And every time I come back, I learn something new and I add another layer in my tool belt, another layer of learning to my professionalism and it just, it's been very inspirational. It's helped me, you know.
Teacher leadership is the opportunity to share ideas, think, reflect, and grow.
Teacher leadership is a resource that allows teachers to guide and empower both students
Teacher leadership is empowering me to be a better teacher to my students and a better leader in my building.
What I see in the people that come through this program is that you find people who are very passionate about what they do, they care about their kids, they care about their schools, they want things to be better. If I'm really feel led to be a classroom teacher, how do I leave from my classroom? And that doesn't mean that someone expects me to then go and become a principal or something else. I can be a leader from my classroom. And, you know, oftentimes we get people and they don't even, they don't even know they're leaders, they haven't seen that themselves, but somebody saw it in them and they encouraged them to come and they made it through the process to be here.
So the thing about the Leadership Academy that I love about the professional development here is that I've been back seven years in a row. It's never exactly the same because the leaders are always growing and changing and trying to find new ways to teach us. And every time I come back, I learn something new and I add another layer in my tool belt, another layer of learning to my professionalism and it just, it's been very inspirational. It's helped me, you know, with national boards, it's helped me, it's helped move my mindset and my growth as an educator.
For me, teacher leadership is a growing process that I have every day. When I wake up, I can't wait to try a different process with my students that I've learned up at the institute. And it may be something I'd learned yesterday that I might even tweak it for the next day. And I feel like every day that if I can try to grow, my students will benefit from that and the other teachers.
I believe in the teachers of our state. I mean, they're extremely, when we work with them, they're coming in here and they're giving their heart and soul to the work that we're doing. They're passionate. And I think we need to create opportunities where we value their thinking and when they have determined what they're needing to work on and learn about, we help them find the ways to connect to those resources.
Teacher leadership is the opportunity to share ideas, think, reflect, and grow.
Teacher leadership is a resource that allows teachers to guide and empower both students and fellow employees.
Teacher leadership is empowering me to be a better teacher to my students and a better leader in my building.
What I see in the people that come through this program is that you find people who are very passionate about what they do, they care about their kids, they care about their schools, they want things to be better. If I'm really feel led to be a classroom teacher, how do I leave from my classroom? And that doesn't mean that someone expects me to then go and become a principal or something else. I can be a leader from my classroom. And, you know, oftentimes we get people and they don't even, they don't even know they're leaders, they haven't seen that themselves, but somebody saw it in them and they encouraged them to come and they made it through the process to be here.
So the thing about the Leadership Academy that I love about the professional development here is that I've been back seven years in a row. It's never exactly the same because the leaders are always growing and changing and trying to find new ways to teach us. And every time I come back, I learn something new and I add another layer in my tool belt, another layer of learning to my professionalism and it just, it's been very inspirational. It's helped me, you know, with national boards, it's helped me, it's helped move my mindset and my growth as an educator.
For me, teacher leadership is a growing process that I have every day. When I wake up, I can't wait to try a different process with my students that I've learned up at the institute. And it may be something I'd learned yesterday that I might even tweak it for the next day. And I feel like every day that if I can try to grow, my students will benefit from that and the other teachers.
I believe in the teachers of our state. I mean, they're extremely, when we work with them, they're coming in here and they're giving their heart and soul to the work that we're doing. They're passionate. And I think we need to create opportunities where we value their thinking and when they have determined what they're needing to work on and learn about, we help them find the ways to connect to those resources.
Teacher leadership is passionate educators taking the initiative to make the change in the world and the difference in children's lives.
Teacher leadership is pledging to be a positive influence in my school district.
She's got a bright future ahead of her.
Is everybody in here?
Yes.
Is Lauren here?
Yes.
Is there a kind of left turn?
Yes. Are they coming in? Is it deserted?
Test, test, one, two, three. Test, test, one, two, three. Test, test.
Are they?
Yes, ma'am, they are. They are.
Okay. But they're, but they're out there?
They're here. They're trying to. Teacher leadership is the opportunity to share ideas, think, reflect, and grow.
Teacher leadership is a resource that allows teachers to guide and empower both students and fellow employees.
Teacher leadership is empowering me to be a better teacher to my students and a better leader in my building.
What I see in the people that come through this program is that you find people who are very passionate about what they do, they care about their kids, they care about their schools, they want things to be better. If I'm really feel led to be a classroom teacher, how do I leave from my classroom? And that doesn't mean that someone expects me to then go and become a principal or something else. I can be a leader from my classroom. And, you know, oftentimes we get people and they don't even, they don't even know they're leaders, they haven't seen that themselves, but somebody saw it in them and they encouraged them to come and they made it through the process to be here.
So the thing about the Leadership Academy that I love about the professional development here is that I've been back seven years in a row. It's never exactly the same because the leaders are always growing and changing and trying to find new ways to teach us. And every time I come back, I learn something new and I add another layer in my tool belt, another layer of learning to my professionalism and it just, it's been very inspirational. It's helped me, you know, with national boards, it's helped me, it's helped move my mindset and my growth as an educator.
For me, teacher leadership is a growing process that I have every day. When I wake up, I can't wait to try a different process with my students that I've learned up at the institute. And it may be something I'd learned yesterday that I might even tweak it for the next day. And I feel like every day that if I can try to grow, my students will benefit from that and the other teachers.
I believe in the teachers of our state. I mean, they're extremely, when we work with them, they're coming in here and they're giving their heart and soul to the work that we're doing. They're passionate. And I think we need to create opportunities where we value their thinking and when they have determined what they're needing to work on and learn about, we help them find the ways to connect to those resources.
Teacher leadership is the opportunity to share ideas, think, reflect, and grow.
Teacher leadership is a resource that allows teachers to guide and empower both students and fellow employees. Teacher leadership is empowering me to be a better teacher to my students and a better leader in my building.
What I see in the people that come through this program is that you find people who are very passionate about what they do, they care about their kids, they care about their schools, they want things to be better. If I'm really feel led to be a classroom teacher, how do I leave from my classroom? And that doesn't mean that someone expects me to then go and become a principal or something else. I can be a leader from my classroom. And, you know, oftentimes we get people and they don't even, they don't even know they're leaders, they haven't seen that themselves, but somebody saw it in them and they encouraged them to come and they made it through the process to be here.
So the thing about the Leadership Academy that I love about the professional development here is that I've been back seven years in a row. It's never exactly the same because the leaders are always growing and changing and trying to find new ways to teach us. And every time I come back, I learn something new and I add another layer in my tool belt, another layer of learning to my professionalism and it just, it's been very inspirational. It's helped me, you know, with national boards, it's helped me, it's helped move my mindset and my growth as an educator.
For me, teacher leadership is a growing process that I have every day. When I wake up, I can't wait to try a different process with my students that I've learned up at the institute. And it may be something I'd learned yesterday that I might even tweak it for the next day. And I feel like every day that if I can try to grow, my students will benefit from that and the other teachers.
I believe in the teachers of our state. I mean, they're extremely, when we work with them, they're coming in here and they're giving their heart and soul to the work that we're doing. They're passionate. And I think we need to create opportunities where we value their thinking and when they have determined what they're needing to work on and learn about, we help them find the ways to connect to those resources.
Teacher leadership is the opportunity to share ideas, think, reflect, and grow.
Teacher leadership is a resource that allows teachers to guide and empower both students and fellow employees. Teacher leadership is empowering me to be a better teacher to my students and a better leader in my building.
What I see in the people that come through this program is that you find people who are very passionate about what they do, they care about their kids, they care about their schools, they want things to be better. If I'm really feel led to be a classroom teacher, how do I leave from my classroom? And that doesn't mean that someone expects me to then go and become a principal or something else. I can be a leader from my classroom. And, you know, oftentimes we get people and they don't even, they don't even know they're leaders, they haven't seen that themselves, but somebody saw it in them and they encouraged them to come and they made it through the process to be here.
So the thing about the Leadership Academy that I love about the professional development here is that I've been back seven years in a row. It's never exactly the same because the leaders are always growing and changing and trying to find new ways to teach us. And every time I come back, I learn something new and I add another layer in my tool belt, another layer of learning to my professionalism and it just, it's been very inspirational. It's helped me, you know, with national boards, it's helped me, it's helped move my mindset and my growth as an educator.
For me, teacher leadership is a growing process that I have every day. When I wake up, I can't wait to try a different process with my students that I've learned up at the institute. And it may be something I'd learned yesterday that I might even tweak it for the next day. And I feel like every day that if I can try to grow, my students will benefit from that and the other teachers.
I believe in the teachers of our state. I mean, they're extremely, when we work with them, they're coming in here and they're giving their heart and soul to the work that we're doing. They're passionate. And I think we need to create opportunities where we value their thinking and when they have determined what they're needing to work on and learn about, we help them find the ways to connect to those resources.
While we're waiting on the superintendent, we'll go ahead and begin introductions. Thank you so much for being here. My name is Vicki Savers and I'm the chair of the Academic Distress Committee. And while the other members of the committee introduce themselves, we also have Mr. Joe Black from Newport who is here and he is a State Board of Education member.
Sam Laybetter.
Troyce Newton.
Diane Zook.
Diane Zook. Just to give you a little history, we were formed as a committee about a year ago and we have, over that amount of time, either been approached by school districts to come and make presentations to us or we've asked school districts to come and make presentations.
that we have tackled the very issue that we're dealing with here in Pine Bluff. Okay? We have, as a team, been able to move districts, not, different terminology in different states. The terminology in a lot of states is based on accreditation. And there's typically a five level accreditation process. District eight, 35,000 students, 120 buildings, 87 pages of violations provided by the state, one year to turn it around. We had a six-month opportunity to put together a plan to identify top staff from across the country to implement that plan and to remove that particular district from an accreditation status of two to an accreditation status of four. It is doable, it can be done. What I'm seeing here in Pine Bluff is an opportunity to replicate that experience and some others. We have a supportive board. Mr. Jackson leaves that board and is moving that board from quote, "a political board" to a professional board. They have engaged in professional development training. When we leave here, we go on the three-day retreat. The first step to making a difference for young people is to have a supportive board on the same page and willing to invest in themselves in terms of professional development and training. That's what we're, what I'm seeing over the last four months in Pine Bluff. So I will talk more. I'm sure you're going to have questions and answers. I don't want to monopolize the time. I'm just delighted to be here in Pine Bluff, to be here in front of you. And, and keep an eye on Pine Bluff. We're on the move and we think that you'll see the results of the work of the leadership team, the administration, the staff in terms of what's good for kids. That's what we're all about, what's good for kids. And nothing else should come in the way of our work, the important work, the sense of urgency to do well by the 4,000 kids. You know, on the flip side of a comment, people say, well, why would you come to Pine Bluff? I very quickly say, there are 4,323 reasons why. It's about the kids. And that, if you lose that focus, you lose a school district. My role is to maintain that focus, to assist the board in implementing the plan. I think you have a copy of a plan there, 13-month plan. That follows the first 30-day plan that we put into place, that we accomplished what was included in that plan. So we're moving forward. Thank you for allowing us to be here. And I'd like to have Mr. Jackson just come up and say a few words.
Good afternoon. I'm Harold Jackson, the board president. And we are very supportive of our UVA program, the turnaround program. And at this point, we are very open and committed to improving the school district. At this point, we had to hire a curriculum person and we're in the process of putting that person on board. And the board is very committed in working together and working with the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jack, I ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Wallace mentioned a retreat that you're getting ready to go on. Do you have someone that's going to facilitate that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, who's that going to be?
It's going to be the Heart. We'll facilitate, we'll facilitate that retreat. We'll have training and, you know, and other things or business that needs to be discussed.
All right.
Sorry, who did you say?
The Heart.
The Heart?
Uh huh. From the Heart.
Oh, from the Heart group?
Yeah, from the Heart.
And what's that?
That's a group that usually, they provide training and services and they also work with turnaround schools and et cetera.
Is that related, Dr. Wallace, are you part of that group?
I used to be at some point in the past. It is an external provider approved by the state of Arkansas for professional development services, board training, administrative training, teacher training, et cetera. And the board has incidental contract for them to do the training and then after July 1 to be involved in supporting our UVA program as an external provider.
Is that a conflict of interest for you?
No.
So you're not involved?
I am not involved.
You have no connection or affiliation with From the Heart whatsoever at this point? Okay. All right, and where will this retreat be held?
It'd be held in High Springs.
Okay, all right.
And all your board members will attend?
Yes, all but one.
And is there a reason why?
He said he couldn't make it.
And what, who is that? What's his name?
Mr. Dabner. Henry Dabner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Just a little housekeeping that I didn't take care of. This is, this is how we plan to proceed. We'll have a short presentation about the realities of Pine Bluff School District at this point. Just, you know, we don't need all the bells and whistles. We just need to know where you are and just your, your basic plan for how to go forward. We'll have an update from the Department of Education, school improvement folks who have been in Pine Bluff. And I believe we've got two folks here. If you'll raise your hands, please. Okay, great. And I know that Mr. Harvey and Dr. Wild may have some input on that as well. We'll have questions along the way by our committee. So if there's ever an opportunity to ask a question, just let me know. So let's start with, I believe you said it's Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Smith? And we...
Got you.
Yeah. Short and quick.
Got you.
Because we have all, we've got a ton of information.
Okay. Yeah. We'll try to give you as much as possible. So, so in a nutshell then, very quickly, I was hired as an internal school improvement officer for the four schools through the University of Virginia. I had been doing work with them and I did consulting work in Pine Bluff and then they offered me the position. So since being there, I've been working with the four schools, the three academic distress schools and the priority school, Bel Air, Jack Ruby, Oak Park, and the high school. The first thing we did was look at where our priorities were. And the priorities when we went away to UVA, where they call them big rocks. Our big rocks were data, they were our PLCs, and they were culture. So what we did is we identified those things that we were going to do with that. With the data, we wanted to make sure we had some interim assessments in place. We wanted to make sure we started looking at formative assessments, exit tickets. We wanted to make sure we had some short-cycle assessments happening. We wanted to make sure that those things were monitored on a regular basis and instruction was changed as needed. The piece with PLCs, they were not happening consistently. So we put some things in place to make sure that they happen. We made sure they happened at a certain time of the day. What, after getting there, I realized that some of the schedules just did not lend themselves for proper meetings, so we made, we made changes because we wanted those schedules to happen, the times to happen during the day. And so we had those literacy and math PLCs at two schools during the day. At two of the other schools, math was during the day and the literacy was either in the morning before school or either was after school. We just could not change the schedule. They, we got, we got e-school and there was a lot of changes and it just, it couldn't happen. No matter what we did, we couldn't make it work. But we did have them weekly. We had agendas with those. They were data-driven. We were looking at the data from the interim assessments, from the short-cycle assessments, and looking at instructional strategies that were going on. We also did professional development during those times because they were 45 to 55 minutes. With the culture, we looked at overarching ideas. What is going on in the school? What are the rules? What are the regulations? What are we celebrating with kids? So we went and every school created a discipline plan. And in that plan, we talked about how, what would happen if kids did this, but what would happen when they did what they were supposed to do? So we began to set up celebrations that were tied to the assessments, to their behavior, and to attendance. So with all that being said, we really went in, we had data dives after each one of the eternal interim assessments. So in that data dive, what we did is we sat and we disaggregated the data with the teachers. And all the teachers were at the table and then we created what we call teacher plans. And these are also things that came through UVA. And in that teacher plan, we looked at the standards and the strategies that the kids were struggling on and also the ones that went very well. In doing that, we, we sometimes had to change the way we did instruction. Sometimes we took the bell ringer and we made it a mini lesson because the kids were struggling. We looked at the time the kids were getting instruction in literacy and math. As for instance, Bel Air only had 45 minutes. So we began to double up that time with the social studies. So we did training for the social studies on the literacy skills so that they could teach those literacy skills during the social studies in time. In science, we add an additional 20 minutes in there so that they could work on the math based on the data that was given. The PD that we did onsite was based on the classroom walkthroughs that we did. We were in the classrooms, we were looking at what teachers needed. So we made sure that we got in and we gave them the training that they needed. Delivery of instruction, we did a training on that with Teach Like a Champion because we saw that we had a lot of new teachers that were struggling with how they were delivering the instruction to the kids. We also did a leadership. Every month, we met with the principals. We started out with the principals. But then after meeting with the principals, I realized that the assistant principals and the instructional coaches also needed that training. So we met monthly with them. We did book studies. We've done a lot of work with Leverage Leadership. We did Skillful Leader, How to Confront Mediocre Teaching. In that time, what we did was we shared out best practices. The principals also walked around each other's buildings and did walkthroughs and provided feedback while they were there. I'm just trying to think because we did a lot, a lot this year. But most importantly, I believe that we monitored the things that were, that needed to get done. There were a lot of barriers. I would say to you, the expectation was that kids should have 90 minutes of reading and math. Well, we got 90 minutes at the elementary school. We were having 55 minutes and 52 minutes at the high school. But at Bel Air, 45 minutes, that was a problem for me. We made sure that the after-school tutoring was aligned with the data. We're not just doing anything that we want to do. Are we where we need to be with data? No, but there is a change and a shift in mind that the data leads to conversations. I don't know how you feel. I don't know what you look like today. I don't know what your data says. And if your data is not saying something, I want to know why. So sometimes there are legitimate reasons, but most time, the instructions. So we use the instructional analysis tool and I told the teachers, put your data on this tool. If it falls beneath 50, that means the curriculum hasn't even been taught. So you might have been teaching it, but if the kids didn't get it, that means it wasn't taught. So anything in 50, we looked at their instructional strategies. We, as a district, we did CAGEN. The whole district was trained in CAGEN. We did Marzano's nine high-yield strategies and what we did was, we decided, first, I got there and I was ready to go and I was gung ho and I had to realize I had to slow down and speed up. So when I slowed down, we looked at Marzano's high-yield strategies and we took one. Then we took two. Then we looked at the CAGEN structures and we talked about which of these structures are going to be good. Because at the end of the day, we can do a whole bunch of things, but if they're not impacting instruction, it's useless. And I wanted the principals to be able to monitor the things that we were doing. We did a whole training on time management. Where are you spending your time? Are you spending your time in the lunchroom? How are you going to know what's going on instructionally? How are you going to support the teachers? We sat down and we ranked their teachers. We ranked their teachers, looking at their data, red, yellow, and green. And then we talked about how can we support those teachers that are red? How do we get the yellow teachers to become green? What are the green teachers doing in your building that's different than the yellow and the red teachers? We looked at building relationships. At some schools, the teachers were struggling with working with their kids. So at one school, we read, at Jack Ruby, we read The Attitude Gap. And he did a book study with his staff, like, kids don't want to know what you know until they know you care. Look at the kids that you're teaching. What do you know about them? Where do they live at? Who, who are you connecting with? So you, in order for you to move kids, you have to be connected to them. So in a nutshell, we have put some things in place. We also, when we came from UVA, we had a 90-day plan. In that 90-day plan, all the plans had something to do with data. How am I going to increase my data? We also, then the state came with the 45-day plan. So we emerged those two plans so the teachers, so that we were not doing multiple plans. We also looked at the MOs that they were doing. All these things were directly impacting student achievement. Student attendance and staff attendance was just not at its best. And so if the teachers aren't there and the kids aren't there, then we can't improve student achievement. My thought, and I keep telling them, and they know they get tired of me hearing it, kids want to come to a place where it feels welcome. They want to come to a place where they feel loved. We want to build their character. When I feel good about me, I do better. At this point, when you go into the schools, the kids are talking about their data because we celebrated their data. So they knew what their data was. So they would come and see you and say, I went up five points. I went from a 60 to a 65. The data was in the hallway. So the kids' names were all over the hallway. I'm a TLI star. The teachers' classrooms had data in it. So you could go in a classroom and you could see which classes were doing well and then have a conversation and say, what's going on with first bill that's not happening at fifth bill? Because they're 20 points higher than first bill. And have those conversations at PLC. The one thing that was happening, the coaches were trained to run the PLCs, but at the end of the day, I told the principals, you're the instructional leaders. You have to be in the PLCs. So next year, the principals will run the PLCs in facilitation with the coaches. You can't expect for them to run your instructional part of the school. That is your job. So in a nutshell, we've had a ball, we've had increases. You will see that. We've had increases where we didn't. We were struggling with getting teachers. We had some problems getting certified teachers in Pine Bluff. Or we had teachers that could not pass the test. So then we had to get a sub. So we had a revolving door at a couple of grades where you don't see growth. That's what it was. But for the most part, because we were in those classrooms every day and I think and I believe, we set an environment where teachers didn't feel like they were going to get beat up if they didn't know. We made them feel like it was okay to say, I don't really know how to teach this another way. So how could I teach it another way? How could I reteach this? Because you keep saying, I have to reteach it, but I have to do it differently. So we did trainings on that. What does that look like? What does that look like if you reteach those fractions to those fourth graders that now have to know how to add and subtract like and unlike denominators when they don't even know their multiplication facts, most of them? So we did a lot of things to make sure that we let the teachers know. We, we, okay, you want me to?
No, 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 no. I want you to make sure and finish. Is, are you?
Yes, I can be finished.
No. I'm not going to cut you off at all. So you say what you need to say.
Okay. Also, we, I sent out, every week, I sent out to the principals a weekly look-for. And in that weekly look-for, I put an example of it. It was everything that was leading to work. So that every week in your building, you should be doing these things. You should be doing an AM run because guess what? Teachers will learn your schedule. I was a principal. They'll have you figured out. You need to do an AM run, you need to do a PM run. You need to provide feedback to your teachers. Teachers want to know what they're doing well. And when they're not doing something well, they want to know so they can get better. Most teachers don't come every day so that they can do a bad job. They really want to know. And with all the changes in education, if we don't, everything that we provide, that we ask them to do, even with the principals, we provided support. We provided training. We provided the resources for them to do it. So we wanted them to do small groups and stations. So we met and we did stations, but it was a make and take. So we didn't add more to their plate. So if we're saying that the kids are struggling with comprehension skills, let's make stations and then let's share them. Because you might have some fourth graders that are, third graders that are reading on a fourth grade level. So you want to multi-tier your stations. You just don't want them to be bland. I believe our next steps and where we're going instructionally is that we need to narrow down to just individual kids. We have been looking at groups of kids and the teachers are very familiar with that. But now really getting down to what does this child need? What does this child need? What does this child need? And how do we do that? And I told them, it's doable, but it's a lot of work. But that's what we're there for. We're there for to make sure that the kids get what they need. And when they get what they need, there's a sense of pride that kids have. When I'm learning what I'm supposed to learn, I feel good and I want to do better. So all the work that we've done is aligned with the state, with the pacing. Our three to 12 is aligned. K to two is being aligned as we speak. I have a team of people working on K to two. So as a district, next year, K to 12, we will be aligned to making sure that our assessments are aligned. We went back and we made some changes to TLI because we felt like some of, they were crunching too many standards in there. And when the kids don't come with that background knowledge, teachers have to go back. And so that was, that was something new that we talked about. You just can't keep moving on, sweetie, if you say that they don't have those foundational skills that they need. So another piece... So, another piece for next year is that we're going to do some vertical alignment. We want to look at what do I need? What do they need to know before they go to fifth grade? Tell me exactly what core foundational things do they need to know so that I can make sure they have those before they go to sixth grade. So, we have really looked at data this year like never before. We have made sure that we provide those kids with the instruction that they need. It's just not this whole group. It's not just whole group. We're doing small groups. We're doing, uh, pull-outs. Um, we're looking at and we're monitoring it. So, when we created our intervention plans, you're just not going to say, I'm doing interventions a week for. No, how are you going to know they got it or not? So, we created assessments. We used some stuff off of TLI, uh, quiz builder. We used some of the release items. And this year, we're looking at try-ins so we can have weekly common assessments. So, that we, when it's taught as a group, what did the kids do on that? And then, how do we go back and reteach those skills? So, pretty much, that's what we've done in Pine Bluff.
So, Ms. Smith, tell me what your, uh, role is.
I'm, I'm the district school, I'm listed as the district school improvement officer. I think I have the longest name.
And when did you come on board?
I came on board July of last year.
Okay.
So, this is my, next week will be my full year in Arkansas.
And, and explain to me, and then I want the other community members to ask questions, to explain to me the role that UVA plays in Pine Bluff.
Okay, UVA, um, we go there, um, in the summer. We went in the summer. And we were trained. And their whole training is about thought process. So, they have the business community and educators coming together. And so, they have you kind of look at what effective business has, have done to be successful and how that relates to school. So, you get these great articles and you begin to compare, how does my school look to that school? So, for example, one that always stands out for me is we did a study on Whole Foods. Well, if you've been to Whole Foods, Whole Foods is an experience. I mean, you're just not grocery shopping. People are talking to you and they know what they're doing. And you can sample this. So, how does your school compare to Whole Foods? Do you have a Whole Foods environment? Or do you have a grocery store where people say, I don't know. You might want to go to the customer service. Or, I don't know if they have that. Or, we might be at it. I don't know. So, if your school is not a good experience, what do you do? So, we looked at the attributes that Whole Foods did. Whole Foods had a team base. They were team-based. Their leaders had the autonomy to make some decisions. Um, they all knew their area of expertise like the back of their hand. They were a little competitive. So, one department competed against the other department. So, you look at those things and then you start to say, how does I create that environment? When people walk in my building, how does that feel? So, then, they come back and look, then they come back again and, uh, they give us a feedback. So, they come and they do a walkthrough in the schools. They sit with the principals. They sit with the leadership team. Um, they review our ninety-day plan. And then, they give us feedback and next step recommendations.
So, you've got, they're an external provider.
Mm-hmm.
From the Heart's an external provider. And do you have any more?
We had, um, this year, E to E was there. And E and I was there. So, this From the Heart will be new. So, um, but E to E and E to I were, um, the external.
Same time?
Yes. So, I believe E and I was just with the elementary schools. And E to E were with the secondary schools.
Uh, is, is the Heart, is it From the Heart? Is it, are they, um, will they be like what you're already doing? Will they complement that? Well, are they, will they want you to learn a whole new program?
Um, I'm sure they will not. Um, I'm sure they're going to come and align with what we already have going on. I'm sure, uh, the board will have a conversation with them. Um, I've met the guy from From the Heart. And we've talked about the strategies that we're doing. So, they have to complement what we're doing already. Because we're in, we're in a good place with the schools. And we, next year, we're just going to go deeper. And so, that's the whole goal. If you look at some of the data, we really did make some good gains. Um, but that's because we really were looking at data and instruction and, and looking at instructional strategies and really doing PD that was aligned to what we saw in the classroom, not just random.
Right. So, I'm wondering with you and all of your ability and training, which is very impressive.
Thank you.
And ADE's willingness to help. Is, what is the justification for needing to spend the, the citizens' money on another group when you've already got all this great stuff going? And I guess the board and the superintendent. You ponder that while I ask her a couple of more questions. Um, uh, have you worked with ADE? And, and do you and your teachers do what's called RTI, Response to Intervention?
We just started that this year. And the first thing that Dr. Smith talked to us about when she got there was looking at our students with disability. We started doing co-teaching this year and had some really great experiences um, that was led by Dr. Smith. Um, we, we started it and some schools are trained. And so, have they fully implemented it? They haven't fully implemented it. So, what happened at my schools is that we really, because we were so into the data, we knew the kids that were struggling. And we were able to do those interventions and make those changes. What we did too was we looked at remediation and the way it's set up here in Arkansas. So, we aligned the remediation with what was going on in the classroom and showed those remediation teachers how to teach it. We saw that as a disconnect. And so, the kids that were going in, into remediation, it would just seem to be a time to go. And it wasn't driven by what the kids really needed.
Right.
Um, one of the things that we talked about was looking at the schedule and making sure that when those kids are in remediation, what kind of skills they need. So, that the teacher can really focus in on what those kids need. That's what remediation should be. It just shouldn't be a block on the schedule. And we put kids in there because they didn't pass, uh, the state test.
Right. Well, I'm encouraged by the fact that you're working with the kids on what they know and then teaching what's next in line rather than thinking fourth grade or seventh grade. Okay. Secondly, uh, what about the math test? Have y'all used that at all? Or have you considered using it? Are you familiar with it?
I've heard about it, but no.
It's, it's like a four times a year assessment. It tells you where the kids are. And then, after you've taught so many units, you've test them again. And then, it gives you some real solid data that then you can report so to us.
And I don't know.
Here's how much growth we've had.
We've, I know we've, uh, used Renaissance Learning um, to test the kids when they first got there to see what their reading levels. And then, we tested them again two to three other times a year. I know we did Compass Learning. And that was like a pre and a post-test on where the kids are. And then, they go on Compass Learning during their librarian technology time and some time in remediation. And it gives them a direct path to where they are. So, we, we haven't used that one, but we have, we do have other data that we've used to look at where kids are and to make sure that they're growing.
And are your parents, uh, beginning to see and get excited and supportive with you? Or is this, do you have some, well, you know, blah, blah, blah?
I think it's a little bit of both. I think it's a little bit of both. I think where, sometimes, we get so excited to celebrate with the kids, we forget to send a notice home. So, I was telling them to make sure that they tell the parents that your child is being celebrated because they did this. Um, your child is, on some of the schools, we did field trips for the kids. So, they, they didn't have to pay. We got donations and said, your child went up five points. And they've been at school ninety-three percent of the time. So, they get to go for free. So, we try to make sure that they know that way. We also did math and literacy nights, which are the common thing to do. Um, and we also did, um, where we just kind of called them in and did some, um, park nights with the parents and showed them and what was going to be on the park, why the kids needed to know these things. And some schools, it turned out, was great and some, not so much. So, that's something that we really are looking at revamping. How do we pull our parents in? When we got ready to make the changes in the school, we did transition nights. And the parents came out in full flesh because they wanted to meet their child's new teacher. They wanted to tour the school. And we really put a lot of energy into marketing that so that the parents could come and feel good. Because most times, the parents only hear from that disgruntled parent. If my child is doing great, I'm not walking around telling, I'm just glad they're doing great. But if they're not, then I'm telling everybody. And mostly, fifty percent of the story, not the part that my child did.
Well, I know, because, uh, one consistent thing in the effective schools research over the forty-five years is that, uh, the buy-in of the parent, them sharing the vision and, and, uh, you know, and being helpful. Without it, I liken it to a grandparent who has great influence. But if the parent's not reinforcing it, so the school becomes the grandparent. But if the parent's not buying into what they're, no matter how good it is, the, the child is going to be slower to come around for it. So, uh, I compliment you on the things that you have in mind and the way you have presented it. And if all of this is, is like you present it to me, then I'm very encouraged.
It is. I, I do.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And I think, uh, now, we'll ask the school improvement specialists. And if you would come up to the podium, thank you so much. You did a great job. Appreciate it.
May I get an answer to the question about the From the Heart?
Oh, From the Heart. They need, oh, fine.
Not, I'm not, yeah.
Thank you for the, the question. The, the two entities will complement each other, but they're doing different things. The board development, as an example, would be From the Heart. Administrative institutes and training for principals, for teachers, and for students. Those are the areas of focus from that external provider. So, so it's not a duplication. It will support what you just heard.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you. Dr. Wilde, and you might introduce yourself to these folks too. They know you.
They know you. They have the good fortune.
You are, you are quite famous these days.
We have submitted reports for your review. Uh, the way we would like to do this is we'll ask Dr. Mitzi Smith to speak to the schools and the reports specific to the schools. And then, I will highlight, uh, kind of the team's review and the findings from the team review.
Right.
So, Dr. Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Well, the first school that I want to address is Oak Park. Um, Oak Park had, um, a total of eight academic distress recommendations. And out of the eight recommendations, uh, they focused quite a bit on the leadership aspect because, you know, two of the recommendations focused on leadership teams and their functioning, keeping minutes, agendas, and that kind of thing. The team throughout, um, the third quarter worked on identifying problems instructionally. Uh, one of the problems that the leadership team, uh, at Oak Park identified is when they started their after-school tutoring in the third quarter, there were some students who were going over to the Twenty-First Century Program after school because they had fun things in addition to the tutoring program uh, versus, you know, the one that they were having at school. So, then, the leadership team came up with a solution. All right, well, let's use them to help do the tutoring for us because they're getting our kids. And which was, uh, I thought was a great solution. And so, they even, um, shared materials, the objectives that the kids needed, and, uh, used that community support piece to help, you know, support the instruction for the kids. And it did show, uh, growth with those students. So, uh, that was a, a good piece. They also, at that campus, focused on, um, engagement strategies. The new principal, Ms. Anderson, uh, as they did walkthroughs, they were evaluating the PD that Ms. Smith just alluded to with the station and the Cagan strategies and Marzano and those kind of things. And so, they were documenting the use of that PD, that it was implemented. And another piece that they identified was that their students were not doing well in fractions. And so, what they did, of course, was to drill down on that. And, um, so when they went back in and did those extra strategies particularly, they saw growth. Like, third-grade students were from thirty-three to sixty-eight percent. Fourth grade, twenty-five to thirty-nine percent. And fifth grade, from twenty-nine point seven to forty-four. And so, they, they are making gains, um, instructionally. One of the big pieces that, uh, Ms. Smith alluded to was the culture piece where they did have activities. And Oak Park had a hundred parents, uh, come to the one that they have where they were actually doing literacy and math strategies for the parents to, you know, see what the kids were being asked to do in the classroom and on assessments. Um, and then, uh, you will see on the ends of these reports that I did a list, some additional next steps. And Ms. Smith alluded to some of that, that they still need to work on the pre-assessments. Uh, that's a piece that hasn't been fleshed out in the district. You know, having an assessment in the beginning where you know where your students are before you ever teach the unit. Because there are students in that class that they already know some of those things and want to start all over. And then, also, the second piece, being that with the students with disabilities, making sure those kids are properly placed and making sure they are given the least restrictive environment so they can also be taught the curriculum. And those are two, uh, big next steps, uh, for all three of these campuses. And even the fourth one counting the priority status.
Uh, Bel Air?
Can we pause just a minute? Does anybody have a question for, about that?
Uh, what would you say is the biggest issue at remaining at Oak Park then?
Well, Oak Park presently, and that hasn't come out, uh, well, it's in some of the information. But Oak Park is scheduled, well, to be closed. And at this point in time, I'm sure they've already boxed the stuff up on the campus.
Okay.
So, it's not going to be in existence next year because the district has lost around five-hundred-and-twenty students in enrollment. So, they are presently, um, recommending for closure, one middle school campus and one elementary campus.
Okay.
And Oak Park is the elementary.
Thank you.
Now, Bel Air, on the other hand, um, will be getting the other middle school students coming over to this campus. And it is the second academic distress school. And there, uh, like Ms. Smith alluded to, that was part of their recommendations, was to allow that during the day class time or during the workday time for those teachers to talk about data, to identify instructional deficiencies and those areas. And so, they did have time. And Dr. Blubman had surgery, so she's not present today. But, um, they did, were able to work out to get the math teachers off the same time. And then, they did also do grade-level team meetings during the school day. The literacy team that Ms. Smith alluded to did meet after school and they also met sometimes before school. But the schedule was already built when Dr. Blubman came on board.
So there was a new principal?
Yes. And a big piece there for the secondary buildings was the implementation of co-teaching. The special ed unit came down. We had three primary observers that came and worked with the schools at Bel Air, Roby, and also the high school to implement the co-teaching process and to work with having a model classroom so that that way that other teachers would see what the strategies were to be used and how you could integrate the special ed teachers' resources and knowledge along with the teacher, the disciplinary teacher's content knowledge. And then the two teachers both teach, you know, not one that is an aide and so forth. So, and they're equal. They had good results from the Bel Air. And actually, in the fourth quarter report, they had to analyze their data from the co-teaching rooms. And so I'll be able to share that out with you in the July report. And then lastly, they did have things that they really worked on with their culture. They identified, as you heard, some schools here earlier today addressed teacher attendance problems, student attendance problems, commonalities. Many of these schools have the same issues. And so the leadership team helped develop things that they could do to help curtail that from, you know, recognizing students that were, you know, there, you know, for the month, same thing she did for the teachers. And she noticed, Dr. Blubman, the principal, noticed improvement in those areas and also noticed improvement, you know, with the students as well.
I remember reading something in one of the reports, and it may not have been Pine Bluff, about a school that celebrated 17% of their teachers had perfect attendance for one month.
They started out, of course, when they started this, actually in January, they did it by the month so that way they could...
That just sounded terrible.
Well, but to go, what they were doing was trying to recognize those teachers that did have perfect attendance because when they sat down and they looked at their data, because I did that with one of the other buildings here, with the Robys' leadership team, they did have some students that did have perfect attendance from the beginning of August and they did, that was just how they tracked their data.
This was staff?
And yes, for the faculty. And they did have some that did have, I mean, but I can't remember now, that campus, I don't have the data for Bel Air's. But I know like at Roby, they did have, I think, one or two teachers when we were looking at it in November that had perfect attendance up to that point. Teacher attendance is a problem because when I sign in on these campuses and you look at the sub notebook or whatever that's on the counter, and the principals will tell you that that is an issue. Some of that, of course, I mean, is for various reasons, but, you know, culture is usually one of those big pieces. And then again, the same recommendations are on there as well. One of the things that Bel Air did, besides recognizing the, and trying to start doing something to address the attendance issues that they knew that they had, was also to make sure the instruction was consistent. So the math teachers actually modeled and taught the interventionists that were going to be working with the kids on the same math skills and the same standards, the things that they were doing in class so they wouldn't be teaching them different ways and different standards. And so that was consistent across the board.
Well, all this sounds really great, but, you know, the devil's...
Well, they've got a long way to go.
The devil's always, the devil's always in the details. What is your perception about the desire and the capacity?
For Bel Air?
For the, yes, for Bel Air. So if Oak Park is going away.
All right. The leadership team, as it was ending out, I will say the second semester, had improved greatly on addressing instructional issues and digging down to address their needs. They have actually here, I know I said that Dr. Blubman's not here, but she does have, her coaches were here. And I know that from reading, you know, they are addressing their instructional things and functioning. There were some issues, I mean, there are a few issues with some of the administrative things there in the building as far as personnel. And then also, that building, they have, they're going to be getting another 320 students. And they had a, she had one part-time assistant. And that really...
Assistant principal?
That really was not enough to handle the number of students she had and with the age group she had. So it was my recommendation to get someone else there and especially if they're getting another, which I don't know what the district's got planned on personnel for that building at this point in time.
Talking about the improvements in instruction and the different things like that, but at this point, it's not translating as far as the children and their test performance in literacy.
On their, on their TLI scores and on the post-test that they did after their tutoring sessions, because they had four on Saturdays from nine to one, there actually was growth. Not saying it was 80% or 100% or anything, but there was growth. But like I said, they've got, I mean, they've got a ways to go.
But was there the amount of growth as the number of months that had passed? Like, you know, you may score two points better, but you should have scored eight points better because of the number of months between the pre and post-test?
The, well, see, now there's, all right, well, let's talk about the pre-test first. The pre-test that the district office had them take in August was one 40-question test for everything for the entire year. It was not like the pre-test, you know, like you're going to give a pre-test, we'll say, on paragraph writing or whatever it is that you're going to be talking about.
Very general.
Right. And so 40 questions would not, you know, adequately evaluate what someone knows for an entire course of study, especially on a secondary level. And so the post-test that went to that would, I mean, would not really measure everything. So the answer to that question I can't ask, answer because the validity of the pre-test was flawed from the very beginning. And that actually was addressed in the 45-day plans. As you will see, the district recommendation that talks about aligning the curriculum and all, and it will mention on there that the pre-test, and that's what Ms. Smith was alluding to, that K-2 curriculum still had to be developed and that the pre-test now, because as you heard from Ms. Smith, a lot was done in those schools, but there's still a lot more to be done. And the pre-test, and then you'll actually be able to see for pre-test to your post-test and your common formative assessments, then you'll be able to see where is Johnny from August to Johnny to November.
But it would seem that if, other than the classroom management and the behavior of the students, one of the big motivators for me as a teacher was getting my post-test every six weeks, one month, whatever one I happen to be using to show, gosh, what they're telling me is really paying off not only for me, but my kids. So that'll make me be motivated to continue on. So I'm wondering if we have those things built in so that the teacher can see results, they can see what they're doing.
Yeah, RTs and TLI?
All right, they, yes, all these campuses did use TLI. However, the district canceled the last TLI assessment. So therefore, and I don't, I don't know why...
But the TLI was canceled, they didn't get the part results, so the teacher's going to go all summer.
So therefore, you just stopped wherever it was. That's exactly correct.
And the external providers, do you find that they are working and the work that you all do and the work they do is enhancing progress? Or are they saying one thing and y'all are saying another? And then the teacher is like a child caught between two parents who are not consistent?
Well, now...
I'm sorry to put you on the spot. And if you don't want to, Dr. Wild's going to answer the question.
So, for the most part, the main point that Dr. Smith is making is we are seeing more progress this year at the school level than we saw in the previous two years. We give credit to the University of Virginia's model that they are truly trying to implement. However, I'm the dark horse. Everybody so far has been positive coming forth and speaking. And I apologize for our report. Our report should lead you to the recommendations. And as you read our team reviews report, it really seems to be giving you double message. On one hand, we're saying there is progress at the school. On the other hand, we're saying the district appears to be unstable. And unstable in terms of leadership and turnover at the district, all of which kind of magnified as we approached the end of the year. So from that standpoint, talking about autonomy, one of the things that the team reviewed was, was there meetings between the district leadership team and the building leadership team so that they could be dialoguing back and forth? We could find no evidence from the beginning of the year through the end of the year where there was actual dialogue going on between the two teams, a building-level team and the district-level team. As we pursued the discussion related to who was making the decisions related to the school improvement efforts, such as will there be external providers and what's the need, that for the most part, that was being driven by district-level decisions rather than needs assessment at the building. We think that, for the most part, there have been a couple of written plans for the district, but that nobody is following the written plans and they're not checking it off. However, we were, we had difficulty identifying the different roles at the district level. Now, part of that was due to the fact that people were leaving at the time we did our final review. And attendance at the district probably was as bad as some of the attendance at the school. So I think it's safe to say that we do feel that the schools themselves, and as you know by kind of rule and by statute, our focus is about the school. And so the district has been outside of our purview for the most part. We don't necessarily work directly with the district, except in rare cases where we feel that they're actually interfering with the progress at the school. One of the things that we have to also think about is sustainability. If there is not stability at the district level, there will not be stability in the effort. And so we're looking for sustainability. And one of the things we've identified is they're still operating in a top-down model, that most of the decisions that are major decisions are being made at the district level rather than with joint discussions. We see the district as being adequately staffed, but that the systems are not in place so that there could be communication back and forth and the decisions could be made in an efficient and effective manner. With our current rule limitation, as you take a look at the recommendations that we made, the first recommendation was about suggesting to you that the state board give authority to the school improvement unit to work directly with their school board. The second recommendation was that you would give sanction the school improvement unit working with the district to come up with a district support plan to go into effect at the beginning of the school year. Because they have a number of external providers and they have an internal school improvement specialist, and if the waiver goes into effect, there will be individual school improvement specialists, then we would see our role with that district becoming more monitoring of the plan with monthly reports to the state board on the progress of the implementation of that plan. So that's, in essence, what we were recommending from the review.
Dr. Wild, that's very interesting. What is your opinion about the number of external providers? You think it's impeding?
One of the, intentionally, we put the amount of money that was expended into the to the report. And in truth, for that amount of money and the amount of gains, again, external providers can only provide the technical assistance and then people have to choose whether or not they will take that advice. For the most part, if the district is deciding who those external providers are or what the needs are, then for the most part, people at the building wouldn't see the need for those people to be coming there. So buy-in begins at the building level. It doesn't feel like we're getting buy-in at the building level. Now, we don't want to take away from the fact that we do see improvement in the buildings. So do we, would we say that they're well on their way? No. But there has been significant gains over the previous two years. So we don't want to take that away from them either.
Sounds like to me you're saying that issue is with the system.
And absolutely, it's the way we're doing it and without a plan guiding it and without a way to determine what our needs are for external providers. There's also very little accountability with those external providers. And so we're paying large sums of money with no goals and no measurement occurring as to, did the goals get accomplished? And while I hear Dr. Wallace, and I believe he's a sincere man, this is a system issue and we don't see systems getting into place. So therein lies part of the recommendation about working directly with the board and the district.
And yet, he said that the From the Heart group is working with the board.
And that would be relatively new. And working with, I feel that we could work with From the Heart and provide guidance also. But I think what we need to focus on is how does a board support schools that are in academic distress and what are the systems they need to monitor, not necessarily how to work together as a team?
When you figure that out, we're going to go public with it.
But if he's asking for us as a committee or us as a board to say, yes, go forth and work with the board, go forth and do this, get what needs to be done, and Pine Bluff, you're in academic distress, so you need to listen to that, then, you know, I don't know if it needs to come from us or the full board, but I have, I mean, that works for me because the less money that can be spent on people unnecessarily, when we have professionals who know what to do and are willing to do it and all they need is to go ahead, then, you know, that saves money for other things.
It does. And we don't, but on the other hand, we don't want to overstep our bounds.
No, no, I understand.
In the process you just talked about with the providers, where does the bottleneck happen in the flow? What slows the flow? Where is it exactly that the impediment is in terms of getting the information to or through or, you know, is it at the administrative level? Is it at the building level or with the teachers?
We haven't actually done that analysis. That's part of what we would do. However, in a top-down system, the bottleneck almost always is the superintendent. Because the superintendent is controlling the flow of information to the school board and the superintendent is controlling the flow of information to the schools. Plus, the superintendent is defining the roles of the other positions within the district. That would be our hypothesis. Now, whether or not that's true, we don't know. The other piece is there is not clear lines of who is to do what. So for example, each school has instructional facilitators. Those instructional facilitators report to the curriculum director rather than to the building principal. So we have some issues or some concerns with their organizational structure and their line of authority.
What I'm trying to determine in the conversation is being able to make a comparison about how radical interventions need to be, you know, compared to some other areas that we're in. So that's what's troubling to me, is, you know, is this emergency surgery or something, you know, what's the intervention from the state, from the Board of Education in terms of, and I'm not asking you to answer this, this is kind of what's rolling in my mind, is where we are on a continuum of what's the worst-case scenario and what's, you know, in academic distress because you meet these criteria, but it's not quite as bad. One of the things that's compounded is the absentee rate. You know, that's alarming. And it should be alarming to anybody, I think, on a given day. Their parents should be outraged if people are recognized for 17% attendance as a good thing or the best thing for a month. I don't think anywhere in any industry or organization would, that would be something that is celebrated. If it is, it's a poor state of affairs. So that's where I'm trying to understand in terms, and we've been there before with other districts and I don't know that, you know, and I'm not asking for the answer, but in my mind, I'm trying to determine, how critical are the issues? Is it magnified by the statistics or is it, in terms of where the, where the young people are on a continuum of academics? Or is it magnified by the number of kids? I think probably this is one of the larger districts that we dealt with. So is it, is it, you know, outrageously out of line because it's so many? And certainly, our kids are important, but when you get to a scale, you know, how do we scale this? You know, in our planning, how do we scale our intervention from, you know, from a one to five, one to 10?
And we talk in terms of differentiated support. And so as we take a look at Forest City and the fact that there is stability this year going into next year at the district level, that we would say they need less intervention at the district level and maybe a little more support at the building level. As we take a look at Blyville, Blyville is a similar statistical situation. However, they too have stability at the district. One of the things we have noted about Pine Bluff right at the moment is right now there is high turnover at the district. is high turnover at the district level. We also are in a situation where there's an interim superintendent, and we're nearing the end of June. So if there is a change in the superintendent, that person will be coming in cold sometime in July or August. If there is not a plan in place, then that person will be scrambling again for another two to three months to figure out the system. They are hiring multiple positions at the district level, so those people will not necessarily be able to assist at the district level because they will be new to their roles and attempting to learn their roles. They are reorganizing the schools, so for all intents and purposes, that's going to be new starts there too. So that's where we're looking at them and saying, this is a district that needs more intervention and more support than we would find in maybe Forest City or another district similar.
I just thought of an analogy. When Mrs. Falk was here earlier, she talked about getting a program started that addressed asthma because it was one of the leading problems with youth in that area, and I think about the asthma analogy as, you know, Pine Bluff might be the place that has no air conditioning. You know, some other people may have asthma, but it's not compounded. And I think what we need to do in this situation is look at those things that compound an already volatile situation.
So what would you suggest? What can we do to help you?
Well, I think if, if we could start with some authority to work with the school board and to assist the district with the plan of support for the buildings, and to help them put a few systems in place this summer that would accelerate what they're doing at the buildings, that would be helpful.
Mr. Harvey, Ms. Barnes, are you agreeable?
As I've read through the reports and visited with Dr. Wild on numerous occasions around Pine Bluff, I can say, yes, we are. We, as you know, systems are very critical for us to be able to progress forward, and so starting at the top with concrete systems will enable us to filter that down to the building level and developing without a consistent plan to move forward. I do echo Dr. Wild's concerns about the stability, because in the situation that we may have within side Pine Bluff, you have a large potential turnover at the central office staff, and if you're not hiring experienced personnel to fill those positions, you know, with five, 10 years of experience, then those individuals not only having to learn a new system, they're also having to learn their actual new role and how they progress in a very large system, whereas it might be easier to gain those skill sets quicker in a smaller system. But we're looking at a school district that's a large size. So if you're not, have the ability to hire highly qualified, highly experienced personnel to fill those positions, that also compounds the problem. And allowing the school improvement unit the opportunity to work directly with the board, to provide them with guidance and professional development around the situations that are maybe systemic or endemic of Pine Bluff, then that would give us that ability, and then working with the central office staff, so that that provides a greater influence at the school level. And then eventually, with a gradual release, we would be moving away from working as closely with the central office as they gain the skill sets or the abilities that were necessary and faltering back down to the building level.
What if, and just talking on ourselves here, what if we ask Dr. Wild and his team to do what he's describing, and then report back, and with the understanding that the Pine Bluff administration and district board will work with him, come back and report on progress in that area, maybe in August?
Who's conducting this retreat that you're having this weekend, and what is the agenda? You'll have to come to the microphone, I'm sorry.
The heart is conducting the retreat, and we are going to be discussing the roles of the president, vice president, what their, what all the jobs is as far as, what the board should do as a whole, what we should be knowledgeable of, you know.
And you know that the School Boards Association will provide that for you, so...
Yes.
And did you, have y'all not gone through your yearly training as is required?
Well, we haven't had any, like, any training.
There's a certain number of hours that are required for school board members for each year.
Yes.
And that's provided by external providers, but if they're provided through the School Boards Association, which doesn't mean that's the best place to go, but nonetheless, you have to make sure they know that you in fact have done it by some group. So do you know if this From the Heart and the School Boards Association have collaborated?
And, yeah, well, they're, they're already working in the Little Rock School District too, you know. They're, they're here in the Little Rock School District too, but we need other things that we're going to be discussing as far as reorganization and those type things too.
Well, I think, I think if Dr. Wild and his team can get started, is that, are you agreeable?
Absolutely. I wish they were going to be the ones doing the work with the retreat.
I think you're hearing our concern that you've got so many folks involved without a real understanding what the priorities are and the needs, the true needs at the building level, just as Dr. Wild described. So what we need for you to do is to really work with Dr. Wild's team and the interim superintendent, report back in August that these are serious concerns with the district and the system that need to be addressed. So we'll hear back from you guys in August then. And Dr. Wild, is there anything else, or Mr. Harvey, is there anything else that you would recommend? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I had to talk with Dr. Wild. As a newcomer, I can tell you that what Dr. Wild recommended and expressed to you is absolutely essential, and I support it, and I appreciate your support, because if we're going to turn this around, there has to be some things put in place. Now, one of the things that I appreciate the board, they have allowed us to identify the best and brightest talents in Arkansas. And, and once they approve those positions, then we can move forward under the leadership and direction of Dr. Wild. Make no mistake about it, there's a clear, clear disconnect between, I'll call it mid-management and the building level. There was no connection, which is why there's that big gap there. And this will help us fill, bridge that gap. So thank you for supporting that recommendation.
I noticed there are a lot of people in the audience that are not a board member or ADE staff or superintendent. Are there, are these community members or other staff members? Who are the people here, and did any of them have anything they want to present to us before we move forward?
I think they either represent the leadership team, or they're here anticipating another matter may come up, and they'll be able to address it.
There another matter we need to know?
Well, we're hopeful that, that it won't.
Yeah. Well, I know, you know, I'm sure you're aware, we have been bombarded by the community of people who are not happy.
Yes.
And of course, you don't, we don't get very many letters from people who are happy. So that, you know, it's, I understand there may be people who are happy, but we also know there's a lot, and I know that your newspaper has reported them, you know, concerns. So that was my first impression of Pine Bluff, and so I'm trying to be sure that I'm open and receptive to my second impression and, and the presentations that you've made. We want you to succeed. We don't want you to succeed because we have to do something drastic. We want you to use the ADE people who, who know Arkansas. They know Arkansas laws. They know Arkansas practices. They can help you because as you've come in and she's come in, and, and we would like to save you the money of having external people, particularly if those people are not working with the ADE people, who ultimately, we probably value their opinion as much or more than we do external providers because we don't know them. So, you know, our goal is to keep a superintendent, a board, a community, teachers, everybody in Pine Bluff, working in Pine Bluff. We don't want to intervene, but it is our responsibility, as given to us by the Supreme Court, that we have to be sure that children in this state are being given the very best opportunities in education and make the successes that they in fact are very capable of doing. I'm sure there's a lot of kids in Pine Bluff who are capable of becoming superintendent one day, or instructional leader, or the physicians and the people that will keep Pine Bluff thriving. So please understand that's our goal, and whatever it takes to get to that goal will be my driving force.
And we thank you.
Okay, so we'll see you again in August. And, Mr. Harvey, did you have something else you want to say?
Just that we look forward to working with Pine Bluff and making this all a very effective school and school district. Dr. Wild and his team will be working closely with them if given this directive, but also I realize that when we come back in August, we may have additional recommendations for the district as we progress.
Absolutely.
So it's not a, this is one and done, it's a continual growth process.
This is a process, as we see so often in districts, with schools in academic distress. So we anticipate that, and we can't tell you how much we appreciate your leadership and Dr. Wild's leadership. It's just essential. Yeah, yeah, believe me, he knows. So thanks, thanks so much. Can't tell you how much we appreciate Pine Bluff for being here, for being prepared, and making your presentation, and the desire to do the best that you can for kids in Pine Bluff, because that's our goal. So thank you, everyone. And one more piece of housekeeping for my committee, we need to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? All in favor? Opposed? We're done.